The development of births three and four. Last fall in September, we began another engagement with Ramallah Al Hamilah Partners to perform a market assessment to understand the market forces that were driving a reconfiguration of the city's port facilities. That engagement led to a second engagement with Ramallah Al Hamilah Partners earlier this year to assist the city with a financial strategy to move forward with a reconfiguration of the port and seeking industry participation to finance that reconfiguration. So tonight, we have Louis here to give a very comprehensive presentation on our request for proposals process that the city council might consider to advance the port reconfiguration, recognizing that the costs associated with reconfiguration of births one and two as presented by Moffett and Nicole last June were higher than the city had initially anticipated. So I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to let our port consultant explain the process and how we arrived at this point. Louis?
Okay, and just one more thing. I'd like the public to know that we're also seeing this presentation for the first time. So we'll be watching it very closely with you.
Good evening, and I'm sorry that I have to give your back, but we'll watch it together. So my name is Louis Al Hamilah, and today what I was charged with is taking you through a process of providing information that will be important for the city in making its decisions going forward. Obviously, very critical decision on how, if you go forward with a project, and this is basically giving you a lot of raw information of what I think is needed. So I'm going to take a little bit of time just trying to formulate and placing everything in context with a brief introduction. Then I'm going to go and revisit the plans that have been done. We did not do them. Those are the ones from your master, the master plan that was done. And then we're going to get into what are your options in terms of implementation. So we're going to talk a little bit in general, some information of how these are being done someplace else, how investments are being made in other places, and then an approach that you might want to consider going forward. So hopefully, at the end, it all comes together into a cohesive series of informations that will be very useful for you. So in terms of introduction, obviously, Ketchikan has seen its transitions both on its development and its economic roots over the years from the different industries that Ketchikan was born around, mining, fishing, logging, marine, and then there was the period prior to the cruise industry. And then the cruise industry started here, as in many other places, with small ships, quite a novelty, and it is the process of starting, and you look at some of the pictures, some of the earlier issues of congestion and so forth existed, going back many, many places, many, many times. And the way that the industry starts is in a very organic growth, little by little, until you get to the point that you look back and say, you know, where are we? So you have gone through this period of transition over the years with the different industries that have been the backbone of it, and it seems like Ketchikan's always reinvented itself. So but now, today, you have this very, very vibrant cruise industry, bringing you a lot of visitors and guests, which are creating issues on both sides, positives and negatives. So this is one of those moments that I think it's really important for the city to do it thoughtfully, as you're doing now, because it will actually set the framework for the next 50 years, 100 years for the city, the decisions that you make. So part of the reason that industry and communities, in some cases, end up in different spots, and they end up in a positive and then a negative, positive, negative, is the way that the industry has grown. It was a very small industry, and in very quick timeframe, not only did it grow in terms of the number of ships, but the sizes of the ships, and that's what you're seeing today. So it is time, if, the other thing that's important, that the industry always finds a way to cope with its growth and so forth, as you just saw by the announcements that were made here earlier last month. So it's, by doing a proper thoughtful plan, you can get in front of it and make the right decisions for the city. Underlying everything is obviously the high desirability by cruise guests to come to Ketchikan and to come to Alaska. It is one of those bucket item lists, and as a result, there is a lot of interest, a lot of interest, and it's not just here. Every one of the, particularly Alaska City, is dealing with the same issues. Big ships, lots of it coming and dealing with older infrastructure. What's fueling that, it is the number of ships that are getting built and delivered in the industry. Now, on a worldwide basis, it really, when you think about it, you know, this is the number of ships that are being delivered. The yellows are the ones that are coming, and you can see that from delivering about 10, 12 ships a year, now you're going into periods of delivering 25 ships. When you think about 25 ships worldwide, it's not a lot, you know, it's one, you know, two ships in a continent, but they concentrate in the particular areas, the Caribbean, Alaska, and a few places. And Alaska is a place of small communities that are now looking at this growth. The worldwide forecast for cruise is very, 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 very rosy for the industry, and as a result, the industry is very successful, and the industry makes the decision of where they're going to place that capacity. Because of that growth, you're looking at some of the highest growth rates ever in terms of raw numbers, number of new cabins that are being introduced, and a lot of that growth is occurring in North America. So everybody wants to come to Alaska. So the first thing that you asked us to do is to try to quantify what would be the potential in Ketchikan, and we did the market study earlier, late last year and early this year. This is what we presented to you, to council, back in January, and those numbers haven't changed, and we thought they were conservative. This is not to say that this is what you were going to take, this is what we said, this is the potential for the industry, and there's a range, obviously, that would grow from about a million, when we started about a million, a little bit over a million, to a million five or so over a period of about 10 years. Well, the reality is that you're seeing that that growth is really picking up even faster because you're going to be hitting a million two very quickly. The obvious, the size of the vessels continue to grow. In Alaska, these are just Alaska ships that are here, and the thought always, you know, we go into a lot of these communities, oh, just the smaller, midsize ships will come to our community, but the reality, the industry's building the bigger ships. That's what, that's what's driving the industry. The length of the vessels, these are the length of the vessels as they come out of the shipyard, as you can see, that's the average for every, every, every year. It's over 1,000 feet, 1,100 feet in length, and that's what they're building. So if you go to the major cruise lines, that's what they're building. And that, this translates, if you take that same analysis and look at the vessels that are in Alaska today now, they're all over 1,000 feet long. Interestingly enough, out of those number of ships that are being built, there also has been a resurgence in what's called a smaller expedition type vessel. So the blue represents a number of vessels that are in that category. These are the smaller ones, the 500, 700 passenger ships, which represents an opportunity because in many ways, that's what used to be in a lot of the Alaska market years ago. So in general, what we presented to you back in January is that we thought there's a potential to go from a million to the five or the six number of calls. So you can see 49% increase, but the calls would be less increased because of the size of vessel growing. And you would be tested. At that point, we told you that if you wanted to handle that, you probably would need five births, not four, and the thought was never to go to five, was that your plan was always based on four. So what the discussion has been always, since we got re-engaged late last year, was that the plan, when you made it, it had to be a community plan that would go hand in hand with improving quality of life. You can't just let it organically grow the way it is, and then you create the issues that you have. So if you are going to modify, add, change, and so forth, it had to be a holistic plan. The other thing is that there's a lot of new, what's happening in the market, is a lot of new companies that want to come up here. The cruise line companies were controlled by a small group of companies, and now there's new ones that want to come up, and they're having trouble finding births, not just here, but in the Caribbean. So the ability to have a fair system that allows new entrants to come to make that decision, and then obviously, a funding strategy that would work for you. So we were getting ready to have the discussion, this same discussion, a month ago, when the day before, when we arrived to have that meeting, the announcement came out that, of the deal that is in the works, I award Cove, which would create a new two-birth facility. I think two things to point out on this. It shows that the industry is finding a way to grow. It also shows that these are companies that are willing to invest and commit because they want the certainty of being in a market. So in the case of NCL, they have been very actively trying to develop this network within the Alaska market so that they're assured that going into the future, that they can bring their guests. So they did a deal in Seattle to tie up their Pier 66 home port, they did the deal in Icy Straits for the second berth there, and now this one. So you can see there's a pattern here. So that basically created a whole different perspective, which then we took the last few weeks to think about it and to come up with what might be the strategies. So today, if you take the position that there's a potential demand for five births over the long term, and two are Ward Cove, that you have a lot of options. And we divided it up into two options. One, continue with your current Moffett and Nickel plant, which would develop four large births within the city, in which case, between the two and the four, you're creating six, or you're really creating an oversupply at that point, and it will be very difficult to create a financial model that works. And then option B, which is downsize the number of births in the city to three in its totality, and maybe then provide some space for the expedition and reduce the capital program on it. And that's what we wanted to go through with you. So with that backdrop, you have your existing births that all have different levels of sizes and so forth, and that is, when you look at the charts that I told you about, the ships being over 1,000 feet and so forth, that is what created, I guess, your desire to develop the master plan that you did. In this case today, we're going to be focusing on the three peers that the city controls, one, two, and three, each with a different life. The plan that was developed for you all, that you were looking to execute, created these improvements really on birth one and two, and birth three stayed the same. And so for graphically, this is the plan that the Moffett and Nichols plan that were brought in, which basically allowed birth one and two to grow in length, and there's no work on birth three. At that point, that's when you receive several budgets, from a base to a high, between 75 and then 98 million, that's quite a range, there are certain conditions. And that's when you asked us to come in and see what we thought and how you could really finance this. It's a lot of money. Couple of points is that despite all this money, if you consider that births, long-term births, if somebody were to invest that kind of money, they want the ability to bring their ship long-term. Probably a birth that doesn't take a ship that's 1,100 feet in length probably won't be viable financially. So over time, you'll face the same issue over births two and three with this plan. But the first thing that we wanted to do was double-check these numbers, because the range was too, way too high, you know, for us. So you asked us that we hired an independent cost estimating company, that is an internationally recognized, and they came in with their cost estimate at 94 million, and on top of that, they strongly suggested that you would carry an additional 10% contingency. And by the time then you add the soft costs of other costs that you have from design and so forth, this project is almost on 118 million. But that did not include your holistic solution. So although we're not involved in the plan and some of the drawings that are here, well, we said, let's put some allowances for certain costs that you're going to have on top of that. So one of the big costs that we discussed, and this is a budget item, is to put a sizable number there that would go as part of the project that would allow the town to deal with this growth issues, to deal with town improvements, quality of life issues, and then another $15 million for cathodic protection of the existing person eat. So now all of a sudden, we're at 167 million dollars. This would be the, probably the most expensive pier project that we've ever seen. So, and still, birth three didn't have anything. So what we've done is done a couple of other alternatives, just to show you, the alternative A2, let's say, is if you did that plan and put an extension to birth three to make it longer, obviously, that adds cost. And then we did a value engineering one, this is what, if you don't do birth two improvements, because that's an existing birth, you're using it, to see how would it cut down, and came back with these numbers, using the same numbers across the board. 167 million, once you add a birth three improvement, it balloons up to 176 million. If you take out birth two out of the equation, then it comes down to 121 million dollars. And so the first thing we needed to test, is this even viable, feasibility, and so forth for you all. So comes Ward Cove and says, okay, now you've got two births over there. Well, it gives, it opens up tremendous opportunities, I think, for, for the town, because literally, you can take birth one and two and put a single ship in there, and you don't have to spend any money on it. And at that point, you end up with a three birth, and this plan would allow with the same configuration that if you have a small ship, one of the small ships one day, you could put them in there without having to do any expansion. So it is a very, very affordable plan doing that. The other is that you could expand, because now you're not using the whole length of one and two, you could expand birth three by cutting slightly into that, in the notch, and creating more length, or even more, if you really wanted to, and you can still have the two small ships on those days. Or you could angle birth three out with a solution that will give you even 1,200 foot berth. So there's different options that that opens to you, and in all these cases, you don't have to extend the birth south, you don't have to do anything, you have to obviously do whatever repairs, the cathodic protection, and so forth. So when you look at these, all of a sudden, that those three alternatives that I just showed you, the numbers come down significantly, 58, 58, 92. But what I'd like you to note, that the vast majority of the 58 million, 35 million is for your town improvements, so the larger shares coming to do stuff in the community, while the rest is just going into the, into the improvements to either birth three or cathodic protection or things like that. So it does open a significant set of avenues for the city that state, okay, I'm managing my, my town docks better. So now, question is, is any, are any of these viable financially? So one way to look at it is how much does it cost per birth, and I know there's a lot of columns, if we look at the column on the right, is the cost per large birth that you generate. On the, on the original plan, you really ended up with one large birth out of those, so the, almost the entire cost was borne by that. And you go to the B options, it's, the numbers are very, very modest and very comparable to what less than a brand-new birth would cost. But more importantly, then, when you try to say, okay, if whoever, if you or third-party has to come in and pay for this facility, the typical cost is borne by passengers, in which is a passenger, your passenger fee that you have, you would raise the passenger fee further to be able to amortize that business. And it doesn't matter if you're doing the, whoever's putting in the money, that's how they will collect to be able to pay for it. So these are the different alternatives, and then the different scenarios, if you amortize it by all passengers, or if you allocate it to a particular birth. I just want to call your attention to scenario one, which is basically, you increase your passenger fee that you have today to cover for that. As you can see on the B alternatives, the number are very modest, it's really less than $4 a passenger or seven, while the A alternatives are causing fairly significant cost increases. So in our opinion, and this is assuming that 25% of your traffic is left, so this is with 75% of your traffic forecast. So the conclusion that we reached out of this is that option A, the, the original plan, the 160, is really, is going to be very difficult or not financially feasible to do. It's just a lot of money just to extend 400 feet of berth. Option B is, on the other hand, are financially feasible. What's interesting about options B is that you never, you or your predecessors always have the ability to extend that in the future if they want to, that's a decision they can make, but you're basically taking your asset and using it to the highest use that you can. And therefore, if you were then to create a charge, or increase your charges, it would be a very financially viable project to have. So now, with that background, is you have options, you have options that are financially viable, how do you execute it? So before we get to that, I just want to give you a little bit of a background on how it's done in other ports, because there's a lot of, ports are pretty interesting in the context that, we work in ports all over the world, all over the United States, and I can tell you, there's almost not a single one that operates identical to the one next door. You would think that there would be two or three that copy each other, they don't. The mix of ownership, control, operations is different from port to port, and it usually reflects what, how the ports started in that community. There's a lot of labor issues that carry, there's a lot of issues that go into port operation or port ownership that make these changes, and I just want to highlight that. But you've got to start out with what you already have told us from the asset, that this is a singular asset of the community, and it is something that has to be treated with care, particularly in a community that is, has so much attuned to the waterfront. It has, waterfront is always something viewed as, something held in public trust, and public access and waterfront integration is a very valuable thing. So in going forward, in whatever model you have, you've got to make sure that the goals are aligned. So if you're going to be asking a party to come in and spend money, and obviously, that party's going to want to make a profit to be able to pay for that expenditure, you've got to be able to align those goals between what you as a community want, and then what is going to be needed to pay for it. So the key to any future development is really to achieve a balance between good public policy and what's going to take to, to expand. Number two, that you achieve excellence in operations, that you're moving the ball forward in terms of efficiency and dealing with it. And then the third, and one of the biggest one, is the risk associated with this investment, which is how we started here, how do you pay for such a big investment? So how, in some other places, how do they deal with it? Well, as I told you, ports are totally different. Most, the vast majority of ports in the United States are either owned and operated by a town or a city or a county. A larger number are port authorities, but port authorities are all over the place. Some port authorities are really just an instrument of the city, it could be the city council sitting as a port authority. Some are elected, some are appointed by the state, there's a mix, they're all a bunch of them, and there's very few private ports. As a result, how a port then is, then is operated and so forth, it begins to blur the lines of what it means to control a port. Is it ownership, is it the ability to assign the berth, is it the ability to determine who operates in the port? So just to give you a sense, this is a chart of how, in the United, maybe, these are major cruise ports, in fact, all of them cruise ports in the United States, in terms of ownership, whether one, the blue ones are municipal, you can see. The vast majority are the, are the orange ones, which are port authority. Like I said, Seattle's an elected board, San Diego's an appointed port authority board, Los Angeles, it's basically an arm of the city. Miami, the biggest cruise port, is a department of the county. So they're all over the place. There are very few private and very few mixed, and most of them happen to be in the Alaska market because of the, how it has occurred over time, but on the lower 48, you can see it's almost predominantly, the ownership is always in public hands. Now, they don't all operate in the public environment. So today, this is how operations are. The blue ones are publicly operated, there are some that are cruise line operated, there are some that are privately operated, I got some of these colors wrong here, I'm going to change the colors earlier because I couldn't see it, I apologize, and there's one, there's one right, there's a couple that are becoming mixed, that's today. However, there is a lot of changes in the horizon, because a lot of people are going through the same thinking process you have, this is, how do I deal with the cruise industry, major investments? So in the works, there is significant amount of activity by ports trying to develop it with a partnership in which a third-party, whether it's a cruise line or a third-party brings in the capital and then operates, which is more of a traditional how a cargo port operates, in which their container terminals are leased out, and then the private sector provides the cash and so forth. So there's a lot of stuff going on. And even within a port, this chart just shows you a bunch of different ports all over the world, you can see, and it shows all the different roles that, how you operate a port, you know, who does the marketing, who does the scheduling, who is the fiscal agent, who does the housekeeping, who does the maintenance, operations, there's nobody's alike, everybody has a mishmash. The red in general is a third-party private, and the green is generally the public sector. You can see that in the ownership side, it's always traditionally a public sector, and that's, and that's, that should always be the case. So this is sort of a glimpse at Ketchikan, on how you operate and how you stack up. So just because you're a public port, right now, a significant amount of your work is being done by private companies, nothing wrong with that at all, but just bear that in mind, because that plays a role in how you bring capital to the deal. So how, how to bring the investment? Now, we've got to raise a certain amount of money. So traditionally, the historic models is that in most ports, the ports have provided the investments. And in many of these ports, they've operated with or without agreements with a cruise line. So some of the earlier ports, the investments was made, the cruise lines came, they paid whatever the tariff is on the books, and the ports makes the birth assignments. You have, in your case, you have funded certain of your improvement, and you haven't really have a guarantee from anybody that's not going to bring you so many passengers. In ports that, as these investments started growing, ports started saying, well, we really want a guarantee, we don't want to be at risk. And what that traditionally has resulted is that when a port has asked a third-party for a guarantee, that costs money. So in fact, a port ends up making less money when that occurs. But now, the industry's changing. In your case, you, you own the facilities, they are directly and indirectly managed with cruise line agency, and they have traditionally done a terrific job of managing the industry and being able to assign births and coordinate all the other Alaskan ports. When nobody else was doing it, they stepped in, and of course, they, they're part of the group that operates Pier Four. But as I said, things are changing, and the reason is changing, and it's just what's happened here in Ward Cove, as, as these cruise lines are bringing bigger ships, these ships can't just be put into an old berth, they don't exist anymore. So the births are really becoming more strategic. Cruise lines, not all of them, but certain ones are looking at this long-term availability. They want to be able to say, I can count, if I'm making a $1 billion investment on a ship, I want to be able to know that I'm going to keep them, I have an ability to take the ship someplace else. Some look at it as a competitive advantage, that they have a berth where others might not have, so these are all factors. But the reality is that now, the, the balance switches more for the community in terms of how you can get an investment, how much money you can make, and how you manage it, totally a different animal, and that's why you've seen all the chart that I show you where a lot of the dots are changing. So cruise lines are more amenable to investments, either by giving you a preferential, and you get, they get exclusive get, they get exclusive use, or by just putting money in. Third-party operators are now coming into the market and willing to invest and make up from payments. So, the end result is that whereas, a couple of years ago, if I showed you this chart, none of them would exist, there is a huge increase on this deal-making. And you can see that a lot of them are being driven by the cruise lines and some are being driven by port operations, some are in discussions, there's RFPs going on, there's a lot of activity going on out there to, for communities and ports to change the model, that they don't put all the money in themselves, they don't take the risk on themselves. So, in the case of that picture on the bottom right-hand, that's the new terminal that Royal did in Miami. Miami used to put 100% of all the revenue, all the investments was theirs. In this case, the port says, no, enough, they leased the land to Royal and Royal made 100% of the investment and the port gets a very handsome land lease without taking the risk. And it's worked out really, really well for them. So, this just gives you a little bit of idea that there is an investment appetite, as I said, for cruise lines to control their own destiny and to be able to stay. Now, certain other cruise lines are staying status quo. They're in control, they don't need to do a lot more. So, it's not across the board. Third-party, as I said, in the past, there were very few companies that were willing to take the risks. And now, there's a bunch of them that have appetite for this risk. But they want to make money out of it and they want to vertically integrate other business models so they can continue. But in general, the more risks you pass on to the investor, the less revenue the city will receive and the more risk, the least number of bidders. So, that's where the balancing goes in the process. In general, only cruise lines would rather like control their own destiny and control their own berth without having anybody in the middle. That's sort of general statements. So, in a way, you're down to about three options. One is the city leads the effort, as it did before, in which you finance and build the facility, in which case you're the owner, you provide the investment, and then you have this combination of city, third-party operations, in which case then you're taking all of this, obviously associated with that. And you would then negotiate for a deal this big, you would have to negotiate deals with the cruise lines that would guarantee the traffic so that the money can be raised. The second model is the cruise lines, like I wanted to show you Miami, where the city, you're the owner, the investment is made by a cruise line and then the cruise line and the city can decide what are the, how you do the operations. There's a certain amount of say that you can have in this deal. The third is an operator, third-party or operator later, which is the city can retain the ownership, the operator makes a third-party, but in return, they want to be able to operate and be able to make money from that. So, those are all the three. There's a lot of nuances in between all three of them that exist. So, what we heard from you last time, that because of the other financial issues associated, the city doesn't want to enter into more debt. So, the idea was you wanted funding to come from the outside and you did not want to put any more debt to the, to the books of the city of Ketchikan. So, obviously, that's the case. The option is the public-private partnership. So, which one? One of the key things to consider is the risk allocation because they're all totally different. And when you get into the weeds, you find a whole variety of issues associated with risk. So, for example, if you were to, if you were to just get a preferential berth scenario and return you get the guarantees, you would be in control of the birthing, but then you would be in control of the whole port and the associated risk with, let's say, a cruise line goes under. None of them have, but you know, the major ones. But they, you lose traffic for whatever reason. Now, you're, you're, you're having that risk. You might say to a cruise line, say, or a third-party, say, you give me the cash and I'll build the facility, in which case then you're going to run the construction liability of overruns of the, on the, on the construction cost. In a port management type of agreement, you shed most of the risk because you're not, you're basically looking for somebody to deliver a particular product for you and take the risk of building it and funding it. So, then, what you need to then focus is what is it that is important to you? Access to the public, control, you know, local participation, all of these things that you build into the agreement. What's critical is before you launch, these kind of public policy decisions need to be made so that you can make the smart choices and you can give good guidance to people that are willing to participate in a bid here. The other options, obviously, you could participate on a berth-by-berth, saying, I got berth one, a line is interested in that, and that will be very attractive to individual lines. You can put them in groups or you can put the whole concession in port. And so, there's different ways of managing the process. Each one will be more attracted to one group or the other group. So, how do we work through all of these questions? Your stated objective was that you don't want to burn the city with any more debt, that you did want to bring in outside partners to invest in the facility. One thing that is very clear, what we're doing here today, I've never been in a port authority where the disclosures of the numbers and so forth has been as transparent. You have not wanted to meet with me, you want all the discussions to occur publicly. So, I, you know, I commend you for doing that. It does put the challenge of later when you try to negotiate, but you, you have, you know, you're not holding any cards behind. But you want this process to be totally transparent, which is indicative of the importance that this process has to the community. So, you've got to be clear that the process does protect the interest of the city and the community. You want to be able to capture that value that you're creating. If, at the end of the day, you have a berth and now it was worth X and it's going to be worth Y, you want to be able to capture it, no longer than you pay minimum or just a specific. And then, what you're very clear is that you want this holistic solution and that's why the numbers have been put in there as we have there. So, once you've decided to bring in a partner, the first thing is make sure the transaction is viable and we've done that. So, one of these transactions is viable. So, the next two or three questions are then the key ones. What do you need? And I'll go through in detail. And then, what will you offer a partner in return for making the investment? And then finally, how do you select that partner? Selection of a partner is a tricky thing because most port authorities enter into these long-term agreements without any competitive bids. It's very, very similar, no different than in an airport. Alaska Airlines needs two gates at Seattle International, Sea-Tac. There's no bid for the gate. They just negotiate, they said, you know, I'm bringing you more traffic, I want another gate, and that's how it's done. In the big ports, there's some of those agreements that I showed you, Miami with NCL, Miami with MSC, Miami with Virgin, Miami with Royal Caribbean, are all deals that have been negotiated and then approved by the public sector. PEVs, Port Everglades, they do it all the time. They just finished one with Royal and Celebrity. Canar will just finish one with Cardinal. Galveston is about to seal one with Royal Caribbean. And San Diego's looking at a partnership to complete B Street Pier with, with two other customers. So, but then you have the, your higher goal that you want to make this transparent and the fact that there might be non-cruise customers that'd be interested in making this investment. So, the idea of creating a transparent process is really the most advisable for you and one that shows the public that you're trying to get the most value. So, it goes back to process, criteria, and approach that would allow you to select a preferred bidder, that would allow you then to enter into negotiations without bidder. So, there's a lot of different ways of doing it. And in, in some places, they go with two-step process, a qualification, a proposal. In this case, it's pretty well-known who the potentials interested parties are. This has gotten a lot of attention in the industry and so forth. So, for, there's no value of doing one of these processes, dragging it out for the sake of dragging it out. We would suggest a one-step approach, a request for proposal be issued that covers all of these points and then you can make, you can move to a decision from that point on. What's sort of critical is that you go into some places and the RFPs become the monolithic documents that take months and months and months and really don't get any, any key data out of it. So, what you need to do is focus on RFP that gives you the information you need, which is what are the skill sets of the potential partner? Do they align the goals of the city? Do they have the ability to fund the improvements? Do they, will they take the risk away from the city, which is what you're trying to, and can they deliver the agreed improvements? Those are some of the questions that you need to ask. There are some major decisions that need to be made. So, some of them I already talked. Will the RFP will be an investment in return for preferential berth or in return for an operational control? Will the investor be responsible delivering the facility or just providing funding to the city? As I mentioned, a key question that is important is what happens to the docks when they're not being used in cruise ports and cruise ships? In the Seattle case, for example, the port of Seattle is very, very protective of the berths. So, when it's not being used for cruise docks, the, even if there's a party that has a lease on the facility, they have to revert that, that use back to the port or the community at that point. So, there's different ways of protecting the city. So, what's really important is that, that once you make a decision to go, don't dilly-dally around with it. Either there is an investment interest there, there's a window. The worst thing is one of these that take year after year and study after study and you never get to the decision. The, the points are going to be very clear to you of what information you need to make a decision. So, critical is that everybody stay informed. We know the demand is there right now, that there's interest. But what is important is that certainty is important. These projects that you start a process and then halfway you say, well, I'm going to change it, that's sort of the death knell, that will almost assure you the project will never go forward. So, typically, the next steps would be to prepare, draft RFP that would identify the city goals and objective. Conduct a market sensing exercise, would basically go to the industry and talk and make sure that they're in line, that there's interest. The last thing is you want to put in RFP and then there's nobody who has an interest. Then come back to you on probably multiple occasions to get the final approach and approval and then issue the RFP, select the bidder and then negotiate. So, in general, in the process, we see it as a four-step process. One is the draft RFP, which at that point, by the time that's released, you've got to have the project definition, you've got to have major policy decisions, you have the investment definition, what is your approach and selection criteria. We have market sensing that will tell you if the, if the test, test the market, make sure that what you're asking for is viable and adjust the document accordingly. And that will take approximately 60 days to go through. At that point, we have a document that you can now, there'll be meetings in between, but then you have a document that will be complete, that can be adjusted, that can have a lot of input. And then, at that point, you're going to approve the document and then the RFP is issued and that will take probably another 30 days or so. So, in preparing the RFP, there's a series of decisions that you need to go through. For example, the facilities. Without, you know, you can see that you can get stuck into one of these and discuss it for hours and hours. So, obviously, the ability to concentrate at different meetings and just discuss one by one, these issues, I think is the critical. The facilities, do you go for the B or the A? The two or the three berths in terms of town? So, basically, back to the muffin and nickels, or the, or the downsides and what, how long would the birth be? Will you prescribe a solution in the RFP, saying, okay, this is the one we want and that's what we want to achieve? Or will you provide, give the bidder an opportunity to submit an alternate solution? Usually, it's a good idea. It makes it more complex to, to yet, to weigh them at the end. What is the scope of the bid? Is it going to be in berth-by-berth or all, all berths together? How do you want that risk managed? Do you want the bidder to raise the capital and build the improvements or what? That's a major question. Then, in terms of operations, what are you willing to allow the bidder to have? In many ways, these are already privately held and so, the main one is maintenance would be transferred to whoever makes the investment. Usually, the investment and the maintenance go hand-in-hand because the investors want to be protected. Issues such as public access, how much the city will get paid, the capital funding of that 35 million or whatever that number is at the end. And then, issues like term, how long is this agreement going to? So, those are major policy decisions that need to be walked through and eventually get inserted into the document. There's probably going to be a number of them. In parallel, there's going to be a number of technical issues, stuff that needs to be worked with staff and so forth, that comes back to you, you know, the actual detailed schedule and timing of everything, what's going, how is the selection process, you know, qualification offer, how do you weigh these things? Any contracts and agreements that are going to be drafted included in that will frame? And then, what's the bid form? The bid form is really critical because what you want to do in terms of making it transparent, you want to have the ability to weigh what you receive and compare one to the other. So, going back to that one chart, this one chart, assuming that, that you all decide that this is the way that you want to go, then these next 60 days are fairly busy in making those, those project definition decisions. Good thing is there's a lot of data already, there's numbers already, you can make a number of decisions between community input, your business decisions on how you want this thing to go, and industry input. You can reach a document that will be successfully achieved and will give you a lot of options going forward in the future. And then, from there on, it's basically moving through the process. I'm not going to say it's going to be, not going to be easy, but it is, the, the timing is pretty perfect and that you will have a lot of interest right now with people that really, and companies that are very interested in investing in this market. So, with that, I conclude my presentation.
Is there a way to term this? Okay, so, I believe Madam Kirk is bound to get the sign-up sheet. And there certainly is a lot for us to consider. While we're waiting for that, is, do any of the councilmen have any comments? It's hard to make sure you stick your hands out because that's hard for me to see. And we'll just sit here and wait. Okay, and I believe the last time we had, what, three minutes? And?
How much? Five.
Five. Okay, Kim, would you mind reading the time for the question? Okay, so, first up is Mary Stevenson.
Very nice presentation, Mr. Abad. Thank you.
Last time we went five. Is there a reason we've gone five? I thought we had lost by last time. Could we get speakers a little longer?
No, we have quite a few people to get through here. If you wanted to make comments in addition to that, we could probably take them in writing after.
All right.
That's okay. My name is Mary Stevenson. I've been in tourism for 30-plus years. This has been very important to us to hear this piece of the puzzle. It is educational. It is important to have that port operation happening through the process. In a sense, that is our front door and what's happening once you get off the dock and into the neighborhoods still needs to be addressed. The June 25 meeting, the community was saying we needed to slow down. There is a new terminology out there of being over-tourism, too much. What is enough? What is, what can we handle? This is proposal jetting us into the 1.5 and 1.8 billion and all that sort of stuff. So, answering the community's request for the council or assembly to be listening to us, I came up with a petition. I'm getting community support. And may I read this to the mayors of the borough and the city? "We, the community of Ketchikan, sign our name to this letter asking our mayors, managers, and members..." and members to slow down the process of downtown dock reconfiguration. Ward Cove development with environmental issues, and address the need for upland infrastructure first, and reality of over-tourism. Before the rush to pass more ordinances and hire staff for public works, let the community work through the special panel we are requesting get organized, and work with the city and borough to address the difficult challenges. General budget, Port and Airport Enterprise Fund, waste management, excuse me, wastewater, electricity capacity for 13,000 versus 1.3 million visitors. City-owned versus privately-owned docks versus partnerships. Thus, a better understanding legally to the gain or loss of our independence versus forever indebtedness. Identity, identify projects that can easily be implemented for 2020. Signage, restrooms, landscaping, anti-litter, and, this is first example. There needs to be a discussion on definition of over-tourism, and the better management tools implemented to accommodate the influx based on projections by the cruise industry. The panel wants to address more issues listed in the 2019 Community Strategy Plan. Therefore, our request is for a special panel, is guaranteed due process, and recommendations that derive from conclusions made a priority to resolve and implement the best of our abilities and financial capabilities. Our timeline is between September 1st and April 1st. We're going to come up with some solutions and move forward the infrastructure problems that we're facing, submitted by the people." Okay, so I say to the mayor tonight, with so many unanswered questions and so many options, we request a straw poll is conducted at the end of this meeting, and here are your four questions. Number one, having heard the presentation of BNA, are you in favor of the city issuing the RFP and moving forward with the reconfiguration of the port according to BNA's instruction? Number two, having heard tonight's presentation, are you in favor of hearing more about survey point holding company's interest to bid on the process of city berth facilities or expanding berth four for Panama ships? Number three question, having heard very little about Ward Cove group intention to develop the mill and partner with NCL, are you in favor of it? Show of hands, yes. Or you're not in favor of Ward Cove? Show of hands, yes, or no. Number four, having heard from the community on June 25th, you are in favor of slowing down the process. Establish a panel to works with the borough and the city to address the difficult challenges we must be dealt with before moving forward. I challenge you with a straw poll. It's the election year, it's time to get the consensus of these people. Thank you.
Next on the list is R.K. Rice.
Yeah, I'm, uh, surprised I'm here quiet, I thought I was about number five. A little nervous. Yeah, that was very informative, the information that was presented to us, and I want to thank the council for requiring public hearings, not closed-door hearings, that's, that's something we very much appreciate. One of the things I want to point out to start with it is that almost everything that this gentleman had to say is predicated on the premise that we want more than 14,000 people a day in our town. Um, you know, is more and more and more better, or does someone just make more money? You know, we're a very desired destination for cruise ships. The fact, and one of the things that I see get used is the fear it's going to collapse if we don't do this. Well, my experience when I'm traveling outside, and I mentioned I'm from Ketchikan, is a majority of the people are, say, "Oh, well, I was in Ketchikan on a cruise ship, it was wonderful, we loved it, we'd like to go back." Well, at what point, this is no, no longer the case, because there are so many people everywhere, that what they love about Ketchikan is buried in just sheer numbers. Another thing that I heard mentioned at the last meeting, um, is what's the hurry? They're, they're not going to pull the cruise ships out of here. We, we are the ones who have a place that we live that is really desirable for the cruise ships to come here. A lot of people sign on. There's so many cruise ships, and there's so many places they can go, and I don't believe that if we don't expand our capacity, refine it, yes, I mean, the mega, the mega ships, I, and I, I like the idea of continuing to upgrade our infrastructure to accommodate the people, but the idea that there's, we should just get as many people here as we can every day for five months of the year, I'm against it. I like to go somewhere, I, I've lived here for over 40 years because I like not being around crowds. And, you know? I think we have an economically viable situation right now. I don't know the numbers, but I think the tourist industry is doing a good job of providing us with infrastructure and, and, and money. So, then, let's go to the next thing, is the bond issue. I don't think we should pay for any of this. I think that, I mean, if they can make a profit by developing this facility out in Ward Cove privately, why are we paying to help them make more money when they come to Ketchikan? I, you know, I, I, that's another, so this is all kind of a little off top of my head after hearing this gentleman speak. I, I did appreciate the, the outline of what it takes to, to make a change in, in our infrastructure and the ownership. The other thing I'm really concerned about is the dumping in Ward, is Ward Cove putting mega cruise ships. There was a covering put over that, most of Ward Cove, after the pulp mill left, because it's a superfund cleanup site. When Ward, when the Ward Cove mill closed down, it was the second most polluting industrial facility in the United States. Not the most, not, not just pulp mills, all industrial facilities in the United States, it was the number two polluter. And they left a mess. And a lot of that mess is in the bottom of Ward Cove, where to stir that up was going to stir up dioxin and different things that would spread all through the immediate area, creating all kinds of more pollution and poison. So, my big concern about the Ward Cove plan is, what are the thrusters from a mega ship going to do to the bottom of Ward Cove? They're going to, I, I believe it's going to stir all that stuff up, and we're going to find, uh, some really bad results in the area. So, I, I am very much between the number of people that will increase and the pollution problems. We can't swim in any of our beaches anymore. Well, you know, back in the 90s, even though our sewage systems were not nearly as good as they are today, the infrastructure here in Ketchikan, we could swim in most of these beaches. But no, this has nothing to do with the cruise ships, don't, don't think it does. Um, anyway, that's, that's my time, and thanks for, very much for having this meeting.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time tonight. I do appreciate all the presentation that was given tonight, and I can see everybody's perspective as far as wanting the community to not be overburdened with cruise ship industry and that type of thing. But when I see people talking about slowing down the, the process and that type of thing, I was looking through my file, and we had our first meeting about the cruise ship expansion on the 17th of September, 2016, so we've already been having meetings on this for almost two years. So, uh, we have an opportunity to, uh, grow our cruise ship industry methodically and rationally, and still be able to take care of the town, and also take care of the economics of this town. As you know, our state has been in recession, at least according to what the governor said when he was here a few months ago, our state has been in recession for five and a half years. Uh, the state has not really been able to come up with the oil tax plan, uh, is on a statewide basis economically. Locally, we have the cruise ship industry, we have the fishing industry, and we have government as far as, or subsidized industries, like the shipyard and that type of thing, to drive our economic engine here in Ketchikan. And fishing industry is limited, because I'm involved in both cruise ship industry and fishing industry. And fishing industry is limited, there's limited entry, it's, you know, very short season, we've got a lot of fish shortages, so it's not a growing industry right now. It's, it's there, it's a stable piece, but it is very limited. By expanding our cruise ship industry and our docks a little bit to make it, make it work better, we have the opportunity to grow our economy a little bit here in Ketchikan, and give people opportunity for jobs. Uh, I have 120 employees right now that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about them having paycheck, and having, you know, people here to come to our stores. Uh, and 50 of those people are here year-round, they buy houses, cars, groceries, they, you know, rent things, they shop at all the stores, they pay their taxes, they're a very important part of this economic engine in this town. And, uh, as a company, my company donates, when somebody's house burns down, we donate, we donate to the Little League, we donate to the Kanyama Group, um, we just about anything that's involves children and sports, we're involved in sponsoring sports teams and making this community better. That's all possible because we have an economic engine in this town. Okay? We've been talking about this for over two years, we've had meetings for close to two years. We need to develop our ports and we don't lose. I know some people say, "Well, we don't need more people." Well, if we don't accommodate these bigger ships, there's newer ones, we're going to, some of them are not going to come, and we're going to have less people. As it is right now, the cruise industry is obviously looking at other places like Ward Cove, or there's other places, they've, uh, built a port facility in Icy Strait. Uh, if you look at Caribbean, that's kind of in the business model, so whether we ever get to a million five or million six in Ketchikan's, probably not real likely. I would imagine that you're going to see other port projects pop up with other secondary ports. Sidka's looking at, at cruise ship docks and that type of thing. But we need to at least keep what we have, a little bit of consistent growth so that we have a stable economy here. And if we do nothing, which we've done nothing for two years, we're going to lose the opportunity to take advantage of this and, and take care of our economy. We'll start going backwards. A lot of things don't get easier, the costs of business is not coming down, it's going up, as, and if you know they're in business. Uh, and what is that going to do to our tax rates? Okay, sales tax, property taxes. Now, what are we funding with those things? What is the impact of that? What is the impact of, of, uh, moving, you know, quarter million of the passengers we have right now out to a Ward Cove facility? What is the impact of that on the city's sales tax? We're going to look for that right now. We do need to have some growth here, and I think we can do that easily by for sure, you know, uh, expanding berth four and facilitating that to accommodate the bigger ships, preferably three and dock one, and hopefully dock two. I still think we should, you know, accommodate all four berths to accommodate the big ships. And, uh, the uplands, uh, when he's talking $35 million for the uplands, I, I find that a really, really tough number, it sounds, it sounds like somebody brought that out thin air, but the last port expansion we did in 2006, we completely redid berth two, I mean berth three. We redid city float marina, we, and the promenade and all that type of stuff, there was a lot of infrastructure was put in there for $37 million. They're talking $35 million for signs and bathrooms and, I, I find that a really hard number, and I think that's really, you know, disingenuous to have that number out there right now. As we speak, the, the state has been expanding our sidewalks downtown so we can walk through the town, and they're nice, they'll be nicer when all the fences are gone, and the construction is done. But that alone is going to make a lot of difference. I think there is some frustration in the community, trying to go through downtown this year in particular, it's probably right the surface, because, you know, the road construction is made really hard to get through downtown, there's no parking, there's fences up, uh, it's been, uh, incandescent for all of us, you know, and I, I appreciate people's concerns on that. But we've, with proper planning and moving forward on this as fast as we can, we can take advantage of the opportunity we have to keep our economic engine going, because we don't have anything else. We don't have a mill out there providing jobs, you know, there's not, you know, thousands of loggers out in woods, cut trees, you know, we do not have that diverse economy right now. Someday, hopefully, we will. But if, you know, if the cruise ship industry declines, you know, it'll, it'll be here, some of them will be here, but you're going to have higher taxes, you're going to have higher property taxes, you're going to have less people in town, your prices are going to be higher on everything you do and buy here. As it is, our freight lines right now lose money delivering freight to Southeast Alaska. It's not a money-making proposition for, as it is, and those rates are going up as we speak. So, uh, nothing's getting cheaper, and, uh, we have to grow if we want to have some semblance of the economics we have currently, otherwise, we're going backwards. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Wayne, I believe it's Whiting?
Whiting. Thank you for being here. And it's all a city council, but I, I don't see any representation from the borough, which is a, is a real shortcoming on their part not to be engaged. Uh, we're talking about growth. Well, if anybody has driven through town on Monday, I had an appointment, and it was a snail's pace to do my business in town, and traffic was horrendous, I saw delivery trucks that were delayed, it was, it was almost like walking. Someone could walk faster, traffic was going. So, we have to look at the negative impacts, but if we're talking about the projected, projected numbers that some people believe it'll happen, and without opposition, it's not going to get any better. So, this isn't unique to Ketchikan. Junos have, having some severe congestion problems, Skagway. So, you on the, on the city council, have you, where is the role of Southeast Conference to take this on? Because it's not just an isolated problem, it's a region-wide issue that needs to be addressed. And I'd see Southeast Conference silent, but I, I would think that most of you would have some contact with Southeast Conference to, to deal with some of those issues on a regional basis. So, a cap on the industry is not a bad, bad thing. If anybody, if any of you have been up to Annant Creek, Forest Service has a cap on the commercial visitors into Annant Creek, because it'll spoil the opportunity for the people, it, it's just not feasible. You can go there as an individual, but that cap is based on past experience and past, uh, business. So, if you can put a cap on, on their viewing, we could put a cap on the number of people that come into our town. Now, let's talk about, let's talk a little bit about Ward Cove. Previous speaker talked about it, and I think it's something that, it's not feasible. It is a superfund site, it's horribly contaminated, and any activity in there would really stir up the sediments that contain heavy metals and toxins. So, don't take that to the bank yet, that you can count on Ward Cove being developed. I think you just, if anybody has a question, just go online, and you can see the documentation. Those aren't my numbers, those are from the study that EPA and DEC did at the time of the mill closure. So, it's, it's very questionable, more than questionable, if that could ever be developed for cruise ships. Thank you.
Roger Stone?
Well, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to come and, and make a comment. My name is Roger Stone, I live at 437 Canyon Road. My name is Roger Stone, I live at 437 Canyon Road. I've been a Ketchikan resident now for over forty years, and I have been in business one way or the other since I was fourteen years old. One of the things that has become obvious to me in that fifty-four-year time period is that if you don't grow, you die. Two-thirds of the economy of this town comes across those docks, whether we like to admit it or not. That is the primary economic engine of this community. We need to be able to handle the capacity. We have what amounts to a one-shot opportunity here. The cruise industry is in a growth mode right now, they're not gonna be that way forever. So, we should plan our growth and control our growth, and I, the presentation tonight, my first comment is, wow, there's a lot of stuff there. There's a lot of things to consider, but we have to come up with a long-term plan regardless of what happens in Ward Cove to move forward with being able to handle the capacity. There are cruise operators right now that couldn't come to Ketchikan this year because we did not have and do not have the capacity to handle it. So, rather than limit that capacity, we need to find a way to improve it. When the mill closed, I was very concerned about the fact that many people were leaving the community and that there might not be opportunities for my children and my grandchildren here in this community that I left. Well, this community has grown now with the cruise industry, and we have an economic engine that drives the economy. And fortunately, I, my children have been able to work around that, and two of them are still here. One of them's an attorney in anguish, but I'll forgive her for that. The point being that the economy is going to keep going one way or the other, and these cruise lines and these cruise, the cruise ships are going to come to Alaska, but they won't come to Ketchikan if they can't have the facilities they need. We need to work with them, and for heaven's sakes, don't slow down the process. Put it in gear, move it forward, keep on going. You've done great work to this point, don't stop it now because what'll happen if you stop it? The growth will occur whether you want it to or not. So, we need to be in partnership with the cruise lines and make this work and make it work for the benefit of our community. I certainly, over time, don't wanna see the, the industry diminish. I remember the days when it was a big deal, when we had one cruise ship in town, and sometimes that was the Princess Patricia, which is diminutive, that would be a lifeboat to some of these ships today. And I remember when it was two ships in town and everybody thought that was a big deal, and then it was three. This summer, we have, I think, four seven-ship days. Three years from now, if we do this right, we're going to have ten and twelve ship days. And if we control it and we time it and we do it right, this community has the ability to handle that without being overcrowded, without a detrimental aspect to our quality of life, we can do this. One of the complaints that I have heard consistently downtown this summer is traffic congestion, and the large part of that has been as a result of the road construction. The city has provided us with an additional crossing guard at the tunnel, that has certainly helped the pedestrian traffic, but it has really slowed down the vehicle traffic. Maybe that's not a bad thing, but once the construction is cleared up, I think that whole thing will clear up. Traffic will move more slowly downtown, but it will move through in a reasonable fashion. We need to be able to address that along with all of the other things that go along with the dock. The Uplands infrastructure is important. The cruise passengers, and I have worked on some of these cruise ships with my wife from time to time, the cruise passengers love to come to Ketchikan because everything is right next to the dock. They can get off the ship, they can go across the street to the stores they wanna look at, they can go to a restaurant and get something to eat, the tourists all leave from right there, they love Ketchikan. We need to take that asset and build on it and make it work. And the, the information that you've got in front of you tonight with this study is massive, there's a lot of decisions there to make, but I think the guiding principle has to be what helps us be able to control that growth and take advantage of this one-time shot, this one opportunity we have to maybe make this economy even better than it is right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Doug Andrew?
I'd like to thank the consultant who's here, did a really nice job, makes a lot of sense. But I have a question for anybody here in the audience. Is anybody here who didn't want to swim with all the recreation center? Anybody? Is there anybody here who didn't want the library? Is there anybody here that didn't want the fire station? Is there anybody here that doesn't wanna pay our teachers more? Anybody? I don't think so. What was the last question? That didn't wanna pay the teachers more?
(INAUDIBLE).
What's happening?
I'll lose a bunch of, a whole bunch.
Anyway, so, a couple weeks ago, the, you guys are, you guys are borough that wanted to raise the property taxes, that was another thing. All this is gonna happen is, is if you guys slow this stuff down, it's gonna just, it's gonna stop all, this is the only opportunity we have here. This is all we have, this is fishing, that's it. People are talking about how congested the city was, the city is. Eighty percent of the boats are gone by four o'clock. There's also a bypass, people that don't wanna go downtown just drive over the top. Um, here's the other deal, there's three private docks, I don't know what the Dock Four relationship as far as their agreement, but certainly there's two brand-new docks coming. They, uh, there's no way that this isn't gonna happen. The tourists are gonna come, so you're either gonna do one of two things. You're gonna sit here and not do anything, private industry's gonna take it over, and you're not gonna have any say in it. Because there's no way you can, people are talking about capital to tourists, how can you count the tourists? We have private docks, you have state roads, what are you gonna do? There's no way. You can't say, "Well, there are only five hundred people that come here." Somebody's gonna expand these docks, it's either gonna be private industry or, or, or it's gonna be us, and, um, the city's gonna miss out on the revenue. I'll give you an example. I don't know what year it was, we had, they were trying to do Dock Four, and the, the people voted down the bond issue, and everybody was celebrating, "No, we're not gonna have..." Of course, the private industry took it over, they got Bob and those guys, built the dock, and continued to expand our economy. This stuff is gonna happen, either you're gonna control it or somebody else is gonna control it. Somebody's controlling it. There, there's no way they're gonna stop it. Last thing I have for the consultant, I just wanna make a point clear, so will the docking fees pay for the port expansion? So, it's not gonna cost anything to the people. So, the, the port is basically, we're gonna expand the port, get a first-class job, we're gonna have our infrastructure built, thirty-five million dollars into the town, and it's not gonna cost us a dime. If you don't do it, all that's gonna happen is the private industry's gonna take those people, the extra ships that wanna come, they're gonna dock them, they're gonna bring them into town, and it's gonna be this mess. So, I don't see what, the, first of all, I don't see what the gripe is. The town's empty at four o'clock most of the time. And the second thing is, it's gonna happen anyway, we miles are controlled. Thanks.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). The next person, Crunin?
Yeah.
Crunin?
McGregor.
Thank you.
Crunin McGregor, it's just how it's spelled. You know, yeah, growth, 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 and I respect my, my fellow denizens of, of Ketchikan. And if you wanna ask maybe why we can't pay our teachers, it's because we're a hundred and ten thousand dollars in debt, and, and putting out papers that are proposing that we might go into another hundred thousand dollars in debt. Hi, sorry, a hundred million in debt, excuse me. You know, I'm hearing growth, 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 you know, the, the spectral and ghostly hand of Adam Smith comes down and slaps us every now and again. You know, and I read, what was it, the report authorizing RFP reconfiguring the Port of Ketchikan cruise ship, air facilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all about this. And that report, you know, again, this growth, growth, growth treadmill, you know, let's be afraid lest we lose market share. You know, now, there's a phrase to scare pensioners, you know, lose market share. You know, and basically, as far as I read it, what that paper said, we're over a hundred million in debt, and to do the dock improvement, we, so we don't lose market share, we need to borrow another hundred mil, but that would, before we got another hundred mil, that would have to go before a public forum, and this report said, you would need to get public support for that, and the paper thought it might be difficult to get public approval for taking on such a debt. You think? Yeah. So, instead of doing that, the suggestion is we make an end run around the public and we bring in guys like this, although I'm glad you got the public involved in the discussion. And, and you did a great job, but the idea is we come in and we get in a bed with, you know, NCL or some other big cruise company, and let them take a piece of the dock. You know, and the last time we got in a bed with somebody to take over a dock was, was these guys who had Dock Four. And it's my understanding of that deal is, you know, we're paying them for the privilege of owning Dock Four, and they don't even pay taxes. Okay, and that was a bad deal. Good for them, at least the public, at least they're, they're local guys, you know, and I'm sorry, I, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in you guys' ability to make deals, especially, again, we're back on the junket issue, you guys went and took junkets with these guys? And now you come back here and say, "Well, let's get in the bed with NCL?" You know, um, and last, last meeting here, you all gave us this nice little analogy, I know it came from the burrow, but, you know, we all have to clean our house and put the kids' toys away and make it all nice and pretty. And frankly, I found it insulting, it insulted my intelligence, it was condescending, I can't believe that someone gave us this in a presentation. Let me give you another analogy. It comes from biology. When describing the fight between a parasite or a disease and a host, in biology, we, we refer to that as a Red Queen Fight. That both sides, up and up, the anti, the disease gets more and more ways to penetrate the host, and the host gets more and more ways to fight it off, but neither party gets any further ahead, they just keep spinning their wheels. And it comes from Alice in Wonderland, when she goes to Wonderland, she fights a Red Queen, um, you know, running in one place and says, "Here, you gotta run all the faster to stay in one place." This attempt to stay with progress, to grow, this growth-based economy idea is basically a Red Queen Fight. Okay? What I'm saying is, listen to some of the people here, take a step back, get off the Red Queen roller coaster, close the window, and if they go away, they go away. We're in Alaska, we came here to be free and out of it, and to try and turn it into California, we don't wanna do that. Just take a step back, listen to some of these people, it's not gonna hurt us to step back from this. And if we've done it for a couple of years, fine, we'll do it for a couple of years more, nothing wrong with it. Anyways, thank you for your time.
(APPLAUSE).
Wanna thank the city and the presentation very finely done. I wanna say I do respect all of the naysayers, those that oppose growth. I do have several points to make. Uh, I got up this morning before I went to work, I just chose this cap. Some of you will recognize this cap because on the front of it, it says James G. Murphy Company Auctioneers. Raise your hand if you recognize that company. They are the company that sold off all of the pipe holes and ratcheting machines and hardware and stainless steel out at Ward Cove after the bankruptcy. I think there's been three or four bankruptcies in Ward Cove. Some of you know me, I have quite a history in Ward Cove. I'm probably the few, one of the few people who have a bathymetry study of Ward Cove on their computer. And so, it's one of the points I'd like to discuss is the stirring up of the sediment of Ward Cove. We've had cruise ships now on the downtown dock for the last thirty, thirty-five years. I arrived here in nineteen eighty-one, and I think there's probably been, you know, you could send divers down and do a study on how the pilings are surviving, how much sediment is stirred up in thirty-five feet of water. If you look at Ward Cove, and I haven't even really seen where the proposed pier is, but I think it's in fairly deep water. So, I think that, that a study, if they decide to do that, I think a study of the bathymetry and the turbulence factor from thrusters would probably be a part of their due diligence. But I think to bring that up as we're gonna pollute all of our environment with cruise ships in Ward Cove, I think that's a scare tactic. Speed versus thoroughness. Slowing down the process is not the answer, making the process thorough is the answer. And you can do thorough with speed. Third Avenue bypass. I think if you changed whatever ordinance that it has been in the past and allow tourism companies with up to and including fifteen passenger vans to utilize the Third Avenue bypass, that would alleviate some of the congestion downtown. It would also help if the next road construction project would be completed before the tourist season. I started in, uh, two thousand and one, owning and operating a business out of Ward Cove, Lighthouse Excursions, ran that for nineteen years. During those nineteen years, we probably helped sixty to seventy people work their way through college. Some of those college students spent five years with us as deckhands and are now college graduates. So, I, you know, I think there is a benefit to having a vibrant and safe industry to replace the, the bullmilk. Construction, whatever dock choice is chosen, if there's construction involved, let's get it done by May first, okay? I think we should consider overpasses for tourists. And this would be a, a, maybe three locations paralleling the cruise ship docks where you would have a facility built, where it would have an escalator or an elevator and an overpass. Because I'm driving uptown and I tell you, it's not the flaggers that slow people down, they're pretty logical in when they stop traffic and let traffic go, it's just the people out there wandering, looking at their cellphones, you know, so maybe three overpasses would be a solution to help the traffic flow keep going. The plans that were put on the screen tonight that showed floating facilities for the cruise ship, the barge-oriented plans, seem to, and I didn't get a really good picture of it, seem to allow quite a bit of water space between the barge and the existing dock. I would propose that you would come up with a plan where that space could be utilized by charter fishing vessels, excursion vessels, and perhaps even float planes, so that, hey, people don't even have to then get onto the sidewalks or onto the main dock that we have now before they're, they're out of town. They're out to Misty Fjords, or they're out to Gard Island Lighthouse, or O'Point's. So, that would be a way to get people dispersed without congestion. I think the key word is not what's too much. I agree with Wayne, and hey, there has to be a level, it's too much. So, anybody that makes the argument that, hey, we've gotta stop growth or slow growth down, I'm not opposed to recognizing, it's just a scientific fact, sure, forty-five million people a year in Ketchikan visiting would be too much, that's absurd. So, there is a limit. I think we need to determine what is the level of sustainability, and then you try and achieve that. Well, I think we're a ways from that. I think if you take, I just wrote down the figure, one point six million, because I think that was about the most that was presented. You divide that by a hundred and twenty days, you've got thirteen thousand five hundred people a day. Then there's another way to disperse people, and that's with, a lot of the cruise ships are arriving at six in the morning and they're leaving at one, and I think we could extend later on into the evening, it's just a matter of getting the industry to accommodate that sort of scheduling. It's just a matter of getting the industry to accommodate that sort of scheduling. But if you're having thirteen to fourteen thousand people a day, that doesn't mean they're all here at once. They don't have to be here at once. Some of the cruise ships are leaving at twelve-thirty or one. So even if you have fourteen thousand here a day, it could be seven thousand at a time.
Thank you, Mr. Holston.
And I think that about covers all my notes. Thank you. You guys have a gong.
Deborah Ayton?
Gone from giant to midget. My name's Deborah Ayton. I'm developing an economic development organization in Ketchikan and Southeast Alaska called Grow Alaska. And I'm advocating for comprehensive implementation, not planning, for passenger dispersal. We've had plans in place for at least seven, eight years maybe that would disperse the cruise ship passengers better than they're being done now. And those plans exist. There's some, they may not be totally effective for the numbers we have now, but let's look at them. We don't really have a crowding problem so much as a dispersal problem as a way to take care of getting them into the town, getting them out of the cruise, the dock area. And we also need to have a global plan and do some feasibility for other places to set up tourism centers. And I mentioned this last time. We could look at Gravina Island. There's two reasons cruise passengers have come here that have been surveyed. And one is the authenticity of the town and another one is wildlife. There's lots of wildlife on Gravina Island and in other places north and west of the downtown. So we could at least do the feasibility of looking at the whole global picture of other places where we could have ships docking. Another point is whether the environment in Ward Cove is conducive or not, we have no guarantee that those docks are going to happen. We've heard other plans that are going to happen in Ward Cove that never have come to pass. So we have no guarantee that's going to be there. Yet we're talking about it as though we're a fait accompli here. And that we only need to plan for limited dock space downtown because there's these other two docks in Ward Cove. Well, they're not there yet. And another point is we've been doing this plan and does not contemplate anything about berth four. We don't just have three docks in downtown and two possible in Ward Cove. We have four docks in this town and the cruise ship industries look at that as four docks. So we need to bring that into the consideration of this planning as to whether we're going to attenuate a dock or expand this other dock over here. We've already had some talk about, you know, Dock Four being expanded and how that's going to happen and what kind of businesses it affects. So let's go ahead and complete that planning and bring that into the whole comprehensive view of this project. So we need to look at other ways of expanding in other locations. We need to disperse the cruise ship passengers better. And I thought Rob's idea of overpasses is great. It's a specific solution to the problem. We could also have more of a comprehensive solution put forth if we just do the, bring the planning into coherence with the docks. We've never done that. We've never, we're just always talking about docks. We're not talking about how to get people out through the town and around to other places. And that needs to come together and be part of the same thing. And another thing I could add is cruise ship passengers do not drive cars. They're not the ones creating congestion downtown. Maybe they walk out in the middle of the street, but they've been doing that for the last ten years at least. So this is not a sudden thing. And it's not just because there's more of them. So that's...
Kathy Russo?
Hi. Most of what I was going to say has already been said, but I'm just going to add one thing to the mix and that's a pet peeve of mine that I can hear. Oh, so most of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'm not going to repeat it. But one thing I'd like to add to the mix is a pet peeve of mine that I was working on a few years ago that never went anywhere, and that is the Rainbird Trail. So I hike that fairly often. Today I hiked it in midday and I passed about thirty cruise ship people on the trail in the half an hour that I was on the trail. And it's in pretty bad shape. There's three ownerships. There's a university, there's the city and the borough. And the borough maintains the loop from the stairs by the library to the middle stairs and that's it. And the section that the city has, has never had anything done to it. And it's a little bit tricky to walk it. I've run into tourists in tiers. I've run into tourists way off the trail because they got on a game trail and they were, you know, lost. There's a lot of cruise ship passengers that walk that trail. I talked to the person at the visitor's center and they said someone on the ship even told someone it was wheelchair accessible. And that is not true. So I would propose somehow that cruise ship dollars, that become part of the upland, what do you call it, the, I don't know, be included in the upland part of the cruise ship dollars where they're going. And also there could be one ownership, one trail corridor through the whole section that could be maintained. I think that would help a lot too. But yeah, I don't know. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Quay B?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. Great presentation. I enjoyed it. I want to be brief because I put down self. I really am here on behalf of Survey Point. And want to remind many of you on the council that either individually or with representatives of Survey Point, we provided an alternative to the options that have been given. And I don't understand, and I've told many of you that I've spoken with, the stated objectives, Mr. Amalon's reports, and how we got to a fifty Option B, fifty to seventy-five million dollar project or an Option A that is a hundred million dollar project when we've discussed with many of you an option that could cost nineteen to twenty-two million to expand both Dock One and Two, eliminate the pinnacle, which would provide eight million dollars to use for other purposes. Why, or I guess I should challenge each one of you on the council to ask yourself if in fact those numbers are accurate and we can advance expansion of berth one and two at a substantially lower cost, how can you possibly, possibly approve an RFP that proposes an option that is two to three times that amount? You're setting a bar and asking for, you're inviting individuals to bid on a project, the cost of which far exceeds the possibility of doing it for substantially less. Now, very seldom do you get a bidder coming in that already knows how much the project is and how much the city will pay. And what we're paying is ownership, possession, management, and control of our docks. And twelve years ago, Mr. Amalon said, stated very emphatically, "We will never give up control and ownership of our docks." But here we are, twelve years later. So if there's an opportunity to do it for substantially less, and I appreciate Mary Stevenson's comments about getting together. We've recommended a workshop and been ignored. I've talked to some of you about getting together on a workshop and getting community input if there is alternatives to selling our soul to the cruise ship industry or port operator. But here we are, talking about a project of fifty million dollars when we've offered you an alternative substantially less. Now, let's just look at that. If we can save eight million dollars and not have to remove the pinnacle and the project is a twenty million dollar project, that brings it down to twelve. And I understand one of the stated objectives is not to have debt. Can we do that out of the port fund? Can we raise the passenger fee tax and do it out of pocket and not have to sell or barter away ownership or management of our docks? Those are questions I think Mary Stevens, and I understand some of your points don't coincide with expanding the docks. But these are things that community-spirited individuals who have knowledge, and this gentleman behind me probably has more knowledge about docks than the people you've been consulting with. This community, from the day the mill went down, has done it on its own. And we can, give us a chance, give this community a chance of input, have some workshop meetings where we can explore some other options. I think what you've been given as costs are too high. Test the water. See if we're right. Thank you. One last comment. Ten years ago, Mr. McGregor, ten years ago, I worked very hard with Lou Williams, with Mayor Weinstein, with Carl Amalon, with representatives of Survey Point on a lease. The city was represented by three attorneys, three attorneys. I represented Survey Point. And we did an extremely balanced lease, fair to both sides.
Hi. I give you an apology. I looked at it closely. I'd like to see that lease.
And anyone else that criticizes the lease, and I'm looking at members of the council, read it. Read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Stanton?
I'm Lauren Stanton. I live in this community. I was born in the Old Green Hospital in nineteen fifty-nine. I've been here, it seems like, since before that because I have family who was here before that. And I think what we need to work on is process, and I truly am a process person. I love to see an open and transparent process. And I love to see people working together to try to do what's best for the community. And I really appreciate Mr. Keen's previous remarks. And I think you need to very carefully think about those. But there's a few other things. I came here today with some real concrete ideas regarding your RFP and to give you some ideas. One of those is if we're going to allow anyone to be a partner in any of our berths, then all previous debt has to be wiped away as a part of the process. Before we get to that point, there should be no debt on the renovations that we made in two thousand and five. Now, what I didn't hear from the presentation, you know, he did a very fine presentation. I learned things I never knew. I'm a lifelong learner. I do appreciate that. But what he didn't say, he never said, "What is the term of the investment?" The last time we invested, it seems it only lasted from two thousand and five to two thousand and sixteen. That was eleven years. But I believe our bonded indebtedness was much longer than that. Now, if we want to talk about bonded indebtedness in this community, then we need to reduce the term. We need to reduce it to eleven years because I doubt that our new renovations are going to last eleven years. So someone has to bear the risk for that. And so what we need to do is start and learn that somebody has to bear the risk for last time. And so all debt should be wiped away. And to do that, you have to put it in the contract. Now, the thing about the lawsuit that the cruise industry brought against Juno and won is Juno wasn't spending the money on what they might call something tourist-related or upland. Now, the way around that is very simple. To avoid cruise ships, cruise ship industry from suing us, you have to put it in the contract, whatever the contract is going to be. They are going to have to pay for X, whether it is a nice tent over the soccer field at Fawn Mountain. They're going to say that's not tourist-related. And we're going to say, but that's what this community needs. We need a grass ball field. And that's what we're going to put in the contract. So they can't later sue us and say, "Yeah, but that's not uplands." I'm telling you, that ball field is uplands. All of Ketchikan is uplands. And all of Ketchikan, even the backside of the Rainbird Trail, needs to be improved. So what I asked you last time, and maybe I was yelling a little bit because, you know, I got type-two diabetes. And I had to wait so long. And if I haven't eaten right, you know, then if I haven't eaten at all, I get really upset because that's what diabetes does to you. It's a serious matter. It's a serious matter. So I'm telling them now, and I'm telling you, there are a lot of causes that have to be in this RFP. And you're going to have to consult with the community and consult with the experts to get it right. Now, on first blush, I can tell you that the lease actually looks pretty good. We just have the right, the right kind of lease. We lease them of much of the docks as we can. And then they're responsible for not only the past debt, the future debt, the maintenance, the rebuild, and everything to do with, everything to do with the docks in that lease. And then we get the benefit. The only thing we have to do is make sure that in the lease, we make a profit. I'm going to out-capitalist all of the capitalists here in the room. This city has to show me the numbers that we're making a profit off of this business. It is time for us to stop being some sort of, I don't know what you would call it, but we're definitely a, some sort of playmate of the cruise industry. We're talking about the biggest cruise industry of which one of you is actually employed by, owns something like thirteen different cruise lines. It is so big. It is a corporation with, I believe, three-hundred-and-fifty billion dollars in, and you've got to have the right kind of agreement with an organization that is that big. You really do. And so I could go back to, gosh, can I trust the city council and the city manager to do this kind of negotiation with such a corporation? And I have doubts about that. And so we all have fears about whether or not you can do it. We didn't elect you all here to be investment bankers or anything like that. And I think the idea of allowing the cruise industry to lease the land and do everything they need to do and make sure we get a profit isn't attractive one, but it certainly has to be mulled over. One more time. I got to say, Lou Williams, his father, his father was a righteous man. And when my mother was the mayor of this community for two consecutive terms, his father said, "The city council did something wrong." And his father sued the city council. And what the funny thing is, actually, if you look back on history, there's so much deja vu here. Oh my God, so there are people sitting on his desk, on his desk right here, who fought the fight, saying, "My God, timber products industry or we're all going to hell." the fight, saying, "My God, timber products industry, or we're all going to hell. We've got to, we've got to build, oh, gosh, what, a veneer mill. We've got to have a sawmill. We've got to have, oh, we've got to have a bowl manufacturer. Anything with wood in it." Somebody's got to have some history here, Mr. McGregor, you've got to help them. There's a lot of history here that we've got to remember. We were sold. Our souls were owned by the timber industry. Some of the people here had their souls owned by the timber industry, and now their souls are going to be sold to the cruise industry. You're going to throw it all in for the cruise industry. You really need to step back personally and think about what it is you're doing. We have other options. There are other things in this world. But I digress.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
I just have one more thing I have to say. I'd like to see the numbers that show that from 2005 to 2016, when you started talking about redoing this, or when we start our next agreement with the cruise industry to remodel our docks, that we made a profit. We better have made a profit, because if we didn't make a profit, then the growth wasn't worth it. We need to make a profit. Thank you.
Also, thank you, council, for listening. So my name's Sonia Alvarez. I'm a resident of the city and I own property in Borough as well. So I appreciate all the comments we've heard today, and I want to talk about why people come here. So I graduated from University of Washington in the College of Architecture and Planning and Latin for Architecture, because I appreciate the land and want to interpret it and work with it and for the purpose of nature, so that it's there for the people and the animals. And so now, I've been working as an interpretive guide for about 15 years, and I hear every day why people come to Ketchikan. So that is why I'm going to speak right now. So people come to Alaska, and what I hear every day, concern about the loss of public lands that are willed and leased, and wall-to-wall communities, and public facilities, public land that is left to death. So I think Ketchikan, the reason we're all here is because we are at a tipping point. And as we've heard, infrastructure is critically important, and we need to deserve why people come here. And when ships come here, they're here for a short period of time, because it's a long time between here and Vancouver or Seattle, and it's a long time between here and Juno or Tracy Arm. And so their court calls are short, and they appreciate Ketchikan. They always tell me Ketchikan's their favorite town, because they're right here on the dock. And so a lot of them want to go on the tours that are north, or they want to go on the tours to Saxon or to Rainforest Tour, and they just don't have the time to do it. I am amused sometimes, but also saddened by some of the comments I hear from people. And I'll tell you a couple I heard just this last week. So a man came to me and said, "I came here to see wildlife." And I know it's a town, and that wildlife is not, you know, like a zoo, but here's what I saw. He said, "I saw a squirrel and a banana slug and an ant. And I just wonder what all our cruise ships are doing to make the animals move away." There's a lot of factors, climatic factors. And another comment was passenger wanted to know how to read the land, how to read the islands as they were passing through the inside passage. And so I explained how they could read for elevation and tree species, and what to look for if the tide was low, and then got what was in the water. And so I was telling her about dolphins and maybe Grand Canyon Orca and a few humpback. And she said, and I told her about the bow runners at the Portus, and she said, "Are they going to be on the right or the left?" And that is the kind of misunderstanding, but it's really precious want to learn and to know about who we are. So infrastructure, we are, I don't think we've solved the problems that we already have before we step into beyond this tipping point. Now, we all know our beaches aren't safe for our children anymore, and all the phaser on the ships are totally removed every three hours and emulsified, including plastic straws into particulates that are destroying our green line. One degree change in water, ocean temperature eliminates 5% of the green line. We're at, been at 2 degrees. Last summer, our waters were, when we were in the Caribbean. When I was at the University of Washington, campus planners had two theories of where to build circulation paths. So one theory was, watch where the people go and then pave it. And the other theory was pave it and hope they stay on it. And the end result was that it was site-specific. And our little town has a very specific size and size of our locks and capacity to hold you, even if it's on the corner, current capacity to hold people, and wheelchairs, and people getting off the buses and trying to make a connection. And so we haven't solved these problems yet. And this planning of a new dock has got to be integral with the Ward Cove planning, and that's really environmentally sensitive. A couple of years ago, I went on an all-in-one tour where they put a camera into the water, and then they projected it onto a screen. And the only thing there, and I mean the only thing growing at the bottom of Ward Cove were sea feathers. That was it. That is a hot zone of contamination. So we are at the tipping point, and we all need to move in very carefully. Council and Borough managers are all stewards of our land, and we live here. Thank you.
We have, no, we have six. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. The next person on the list to speak is Pete Farson.
There we go. All right, everybody, thank you for being here today. I'm here not so much to lambast people or denigrate anybody or really give you my opinion. Really, I'm here to maybe remind some of the folks to love this place. Things that we often forget about. Ketchikan has a very short memory. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm 40 years old, but I've spent 25 seasons in tourism here. I've worked tour operations from one side of the island to the other, and I've been involved with easily 125,000 people going fishing here, directly involved with, probably another 20, 25,000 in other operations. So I know a little bit about this community. I'm born and raised, third or fourth generation perhaps. That being said, let's first talk about the downtown port expansion. Primarily, Ketchikan has a poor project history. Some of this is mentioned before, but I'd like to revisit it. And again, just to remind everybody where we stand and how we're here today. First, the K-High Pool was mentioned. Does everybody know that when that pool was built, it was built with bonds? Before those bonds were paid for, we did a second round of bonding. That's pretty poor business to me. And then before that bond, that set of bonds were paid for, we tore it down and built a new one. And today, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're still paying for that set of bonds. And now it's parking lot. The White Cliff Building, we sold it away, let somebody renovate it, and then bought it back. This is not Econ 101. You can have your ideas, whether that was a good or bad idea, but that's a rally to what we did, and most schools of business wouldn't teach that. Lastly, berth four. I tell you, I love tourism. I love showing people this place, but I was highly against berth four. And I tell you why. Because the city fathers put it up to a vote, and the community said, "No, we don't want to pay for it. We don't want to bond for it." And as much as I wanted that facility, and as much as I think that facility has enhanced Ketchikan, and it's been run well, and is a good experience, and does good things for Ketchikan, I was against it because the people spoke. And then the city fathers came along and backdoored the community on it. Took that away from us. The intent of the community wasn't known. Survey Point Holdings came along. As I've said, they've done a good job in between, but it's not what the community wanted. So everything here today is about the community. It's about us. It's about what we want. Everybody always says things. There's this big supposition that eternal growth, eternal expansion is always a good thing. I don't necessarily agree. I think that needs to be studied and discussed here very, very deeply, whether we think that's a good thing. That being said, oh, and for those who don't know, I believe the Survey Point was a 30-year lease with two 10-year options that were renewed. And at that point, they can do whatever they want with it, which that's what the community did, that's what the city fathers chose to do. So downtown port expansion. I think expanding berth four, or excuse me, expanding berth one, expanding berth two, I think these are small changes on top of existing infrastructure that already exists. And I say that based upon my 25 years of experience in putting 10 miles a day on a car and just getting the downtown corridor alone in the summertime. We have most of the infrastructure. It's already there. I think it's really a small change additive to the footprint of Ketchikan. That's my opinion. I'm not here to advocate whether that's a good or bad proposition. However, I do disagree with the presenter previous, who states that an RFP and a bonding discussion cannot occur simultaneously. I think that's putting the car way, way, way ahead of the course. I think both of these processes can exist side by side. And in fact, Mr. Keen spoke earlier, has brought to light another option. I think that's an immediate cause to put on the brakes here. There's a lot of options, there are a lot of options here that now need to be discussed in the community. Be banging about in forums like this, at the pub, at your dinner table, on your councilman's phone later, or anything, I'll live with like 10 o'clock. Anyway, I completely disagree that these aren't compatible processes that can be adventured side by side in the community. And I think at the end of the day, I think we're going to have to put this all over about which options people would like to see. I also agree that the RFP is insanely expensive for what it provides. And I think partnering is truly a bad idea. I think it gives away the farm. I don't know how many folks of you travel elsewhere, but I've been a few cruise ports on other continents, and partnering is giving away the farm. It's giving away control, and it's giving away, it's giving away control. All these entities think that they have manifest destiny to do what they want with this community. No, we have the right of self-determination. That is the difference. Sorry, not for this process, folks. So anyway, if we bond it out, whatever we do, as Mr. Stanton so eloquently put it, "Let's just get paid." We have to make sure we get paid, whether that's equality of life for our kids, the governors selling the state away. We need to make sure this community is paid, whether it's tax dollars, equality of life, whatever that measure, that metric is that we decide, we need to get paid. Next, I just want to talk about Ward Cove first. So as I said, I'm not here to denigrate anybody. May I speak? Can I speak? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think that shows a lot about what some people think about all of us. Also, I think Ward Cove group not showing up at the last meeting shows a lot about what they think about us. And I find it wholly unsatisfactory and completely unethical to either direct or allow a city employee to present their statement. All right. So either way, Ward Cove yay, Ward Cove not. Either way, 250,000 people go that way. We need to talk about what that's going to do to traffic island-wide. I guarantee that will increase traffic island-wide, whether we want it or not. Moving those people out there, those people still want to go to Rainforest, they still want to go to the Haring Cove. It will expand traffic, not delimit it. It's going to have an impact on Ward Lake. It's going to have an impact on troopers, services, infrastructure. We need to make sure we get paid for this. And before you naysay me, I think we need to immediately move to annex Ward Cove, put it on the tax rolls now, so we can ensure we get paid. And again, before you naysay me, I'm going to read Assembly OK's Revilla Development Planning, posted by Leila Carey on KRBD, December 8, 2014. I don't know where this stands, but I just want to put it in everybody's head that stood at one time. "An ambitious proposal to develop about 300 acres of Ketchikan Gateway Borough-owned property off Revilla Road into a residential community, complete with a senior center, churches, schools, and stores, received a tentative green light from the Borough Assembly Monday. During a special meeting scheduled primarily for that issue, the Assembly voted 3-3 on a motion to allow Ward Cove six months to further develop its proposals. Mayor David Landis broke the tie in favor of allowing the process to move forward. David Spockley is president of Ward Cove Group, and he answered questions from the Assembly for about two hours Monday night. The development would begin with utilities, which Spockley said would not be difficult. He has already developed parts of Ward Cove and has a sewage treatment plant in place that can handle 25,000 gallons a day. His business also controls Connaught Lake Dam and the pipeline leading from that lake to Ward Cove. He said that could provide potable water. For electric, Spockley said he already talked with Ketchikan Public Utilities. They already have the transformers in place. They have all the equipment in place to put a 5-megawatt transformer out there and a substation. So electricity is easily economically done while we pay for diesel." After that, Spockley said they would build a senior center, which would be close to the intersection of Revilla Road and North Tongass Highway. General housing and a retail center would follow, also close to that intersection. Later on, as the need arises, single-family homes, schools, and churches could be developed on property further up Revilla Road, close to Ward Lake. The last section proposed for potential development would be property that has some popular hiking trails, Salvage Trail and portions of Ward Creek Trail. Earlier in the meeting, Eric Munch spoke against concluding the property with trails in the development proposal. He said that area, called Track B, should be withdrawn. "The Track B has a full mile of the Ward Creek Trail that would be either obliterated or obstructed or heavily degraded by the development shown on the aerial photo," he said, "as well as a half-mile of connecting trails that would be similarly disrupted." Spockley said the trails could remain even with the development, although they likely would be within sight of housing. Borough Assembly members questioned Spockley about finances, which he said would include bank loans and private investments, and perhaps funding through the last industrial development and export authority. There was concern about his proposal to lease the property while further planning takes place, with the option to purchase at the end of that time. Some Assembly members said they prefer selling the property outright, although that too is potentially problematic. There is some question about what the land is actually worth. In the end, those that supported the motion said they want to see what kind of development plan Spockley comes up with in six months. With Monday's vote, he has that time to investigate the property more thoroughly and negotiate details with Borough officials." I don't know where that stands today, but I hope we all figure it out. A lot more going on here than just Ward Cove expansion. Kind of sick about other people making money off the backs of the community. We need to get paid. That being said, I'm all for development, but it's got to be driven with community input in mind. Thank you.
Betsy Burdette? Okay, Rob Shear?
City Council, Rob Shear. So 614 Lotus. I've been here 22 years, and I primarily came for the cruise industry to develop a system or a business that is very close to my heart. I had generations of loggers in my family and became a world champion lumberjack and came to Ketchikan as a competitor and fell in love with Ketchikan in Alaska in general. And I saw a pathway to create a life for myself here in Ketchikan. And, uh, I saw a pathway to, uh, create a life for myself here in Ketchikan, uh, through tourism. And in the 20 years I've been here, um, I've observed a lot of changes. Cause we had 350,000 people coming to Ketchikan at that time. And now, I think it was a little over 1.5 million this year. Um, the primarily changes to Ketchikan at that time, the Spruce Mill, or the Ward Cove Mill had just closed, and, and so much about the community was under distress. And, uh, you could feel it. It was real. And, uh, Ketchikan had an opportunity to embrace tourism. And I think the, uh, the city, the city fathers, uh, really did a great job. I watched for 20 years, uh, as all the expansions had moved forward. And, um, under your leadership and other past councils, uh, we have created a tremendous, uh, economy that you can see throughout the community, not only in real estate, uh, job creation, uh, infrastructure, all coming from, uh, from the, the economy created by, by the cruise ships. So here we are at a juncture. Uh, the ships are getting bigger, uh, and more passengers are there, are coming off each ship. And, uh, the city has, uh, in front of it, a decision to make. We have four berths in downtown, and the city controls those. And all the money that comes from those ships is paying for the infrastructure of the port. Uh, we get head tax from them that we're sharing with the state and the borough. Uh, that, those funds are made available to the city. We look at our sales tax that's generated, I think it's $120 per person is spent in Ketchikan per passenger, so it was a, you know, 160 million, uh, 160 million dollars that are generated, uh, you know, 6% of that to the economy that stays in our community. Um, take the jobs, how much, how much do those jobs create? I mean, it just, it reverberates through the community, resonates, uh, over and over again. So, coming in 20 years ago and seeing the loss of the economy from the, the logging industry, and seeing what's happened under the city leadership with the cruise industry, uh, it has been so positive, yet right now, we have, uh, a lot of growth, and that growth has to be managed. Uh, the community, the community feels that growth. So what do, what do we do? I think we have to work with the cruise line industry. We have to work with the current people that are engaged in the process of how these ships get here, how they're scheduling, uh, we schedule them with our ports and harbor, with the city, uh, to, to fill, figure out how much growth we can manage. But, at the same time, we have to manage our future by making sure our port, uh, goes through the development that is required to at least have modest growth and we stay viable in Southeast Alaska. And I say not just here in Ketchikan, but in Southeast Alaska. These ships come in from Seattle, they come from Vancouver, they come from San Francisco. And they all come in and they have to find their way in Southeast Alaska. We have great partners, not, you know, in the industry, but in, uh, the cruise line agencies that figure out how this dance works. So we, as a community, can request that this dance that we're performing with the cruise ships, um, is figured out. We can do that. But at the same time, we need to also protect the growth of our port, or at least the, the, uh, slow growth. We don't have to grow, uh, here the name, the, the number of 1.7 million. Um, 1.2 where we're at right now, if we manage a little bit more growth with these ships and how we do it, I think Ketchikan can see, uh, not exactly a status quo for where we are right now, but very close. So there's a lot of work, but I wanna encourage you, the council, to know that you have such talented people here in this community, uh, for your uplands planning. I mean, there's been uplands planning going on for at least 10 years that I've been involved in. And, um, the people that here in this community can oversee a lot of that, what is really needed with the work we've already done. I think we have a tremendous ports and harbor, uh, and the city council staff, or the city staff, they manage our port very well already. And if we can actually reconfigure right now with the, uh, the docks we have, the, uh, berth one does need to be expanded. Uh, we have options, as, uh, as we heard tonight from, uh, from the presenter. But, uh, I wanna encourage you guys during this, this, uh, this decision-making to know that you have the options to go out with partnerships. But really, the communities, uh, you guys have a really, really strong, uh, support group in the industry and within this community to get these things done if you choose, uh, as a council, to go forward, uh, or do not choose to go forward with a partnership. Uh, these things can still happen very well, right here within this community and the, and the, uh, the partners that we have currently in the industry. Um, so really, that's really what I wanna say, I wanna say to the community too, uh, as a whole, is that, you know, if we manage this, uh, we don't have to be afraid of this economy. This is a good economy. Uh, the pulp mill shooting down, shutting down in the logging industry, uh, we don't want to experience anything like that, uh, within this industry. And we don't have to ever lose the, the growth that we're having now. We can just be smarter at it. Um, so, you know, that, that's really what I wanna say. This, this is a very important economy that we're dealing with here, and your decisions, uh, about the expansion are very important. Um, and, uh, just encourage you, uh, during your process to, uh, to just make really good decisions and, and protect the economy and the community. Alright, thank you.
Kathleen Light? Uh, Jessica Miles?
Hello, I'm Jessica Miles, uh, mother of four boys, strapping. And I really wanted to echo what Dr. Mr. Rice said about everything just kinda coming together. And if it were up to me, I would get rid of cruise ships. But, since it's not up to me, and since we use them so frequently for income and everything else, what I think about Ward Cove is there's enough tourism. There's enough competition for tourism. Selling our souls isn't the answer. Ward Cove is the answer. Silt, toxic crap in the ocean bed, more tour buses in the ditch? No thanks. Not going to anything be like, there's not gonna be anything left for my children or their children, as my friend said it well. I'm afraid of what Ketchikan will have for our children and what will be left. Which is, makes me a little emotional, sorry. Just the other day, I saw a cruise ship bringing into a humpback whale pod next to Innet Island, and that broke my heart. There's no high requirements here and rules like in Washington for gray water and billiard leases. It's just gonna keep getting worse. And we need to accommodate these ships by providing refuse facilities, giving them, having them pay for everything onshore and have it come out of our pocket, isn't good. And it's, we're already in debt, as, as other people have said. And there's no amount of money that can be enough for our livelihood and our children. Thanks.
Chuck Sligell? No, it's right there.
Can you hear me okay? I'm Chuck Sligell, 683, uh, excuse me, 6389 Mayo Lane. I'm, uh, I'm coming here speaking without any real education on this. It's extraordinarily overwhelming. Usually I try to sit down and think something through, and this, this, uh, this thing's a mind bender. But I have a couple of thoughts that I'd like to share. This is probably, right now, I'm, I've been here my entire life, and I'm probably more afraid of our future than I've ever been, just because of the dynamics of what's going on. Um, in regards to cruise line agency or the folks that have Survey Point, I don't know the particulars of the lease. I don't know if it's a good lease, it's a bad lease. But I do know they're the smartest people in the room, whether we like it or not. I've been there, I've done that. I know it. So, whether we like what they have to say, whether we like what they have to say, I think we need to listen. I mean, they had a profit motive, and maybe they got a really good deal when they made their lease. But they have a shared enemy right now. They no more want to have somebody from Portugal come in and run our ports than we do. So they, right now, they're our friends, even if they weren't. And they need to be in the same room. We need to listen to them. And we need to hear what they have to say. We have nothing to lose by doing that. I'd be interested in hearing that. I think it's important that we consider that the town, if we're not careful, is not gonna be something we're proud of. In other words, if you go, if you go to the Caribbean, there's lots of places that the people that live there completely mourn what they used to have. And so, there's a certain amount of business that's really good for us, and a certain amount that we can maybe manage. And at some point, if we're not careful, 20 years from now, we're gonna wonder just what the hell we did, and not be proud of it. And if we turn into a seasonal community without any future for our children, without the ability because of the combination of healthcare and all the other things that are working against us here, and people can't stay here for the winter, we're not gonna be proud of that. And I don't know if we can stop it, but I don't, I think we have to be careful that we don't create something that we're not proud of in the long term. I think Ward Cove scares the hell out of me. I've been in business long enough to know that if they put a, a, um, dock out there, it's obviously not gonna accommodate one ship, it's gonna accommodate two. And it seems to me with the size of the ships that they'll be able to handle four or five or 600,000 people. Whoever owns that is not gonna watch half their dock set empty. They're gonna go out and they're gonna price it. They're gonna go out and compete for the business. And as soon as you have somebody who all of their costs are in fixed costs competing with us, the value of our ability to get, to extract proper rent from the cruise ships plummets. In other words, literally, just that competition could take 20 or 30 or 40% of our profit away by the fact that we have to compete for our ships. And that scares the hell out of me. I don't, and we're talking like it's a done deal. There are thousands of people that have invested all of their money in the community of Ketchikan. And the fact that somebody from Fairbanks and a cruise line from somewhere else can turn around and take away all of the potential profit downtime by arbitrary competition scares the hell out of me. It could be that that's a good thing for town. It could be that we take that three-ship option, we focus on taking care of ourselves, our kids, our community, and we make a really good place to come to, and the growth is out there and we are really good. Could be that. Could also be that the thing is so bad for us, we should choose to fight right now and get it over with. In other words, I don't want to be waiting 10 years from now, and where should we to stop that? If we've got hundreds of millions of dollars invested in town, and somebody's gonna go out there and destroy our future, why are we fighting now? I mean, if it's really bad, I'd like to know if that's good for us, or if it's bad for us. I'd like to know whether I'm supporting it, or I'm fighting against it. But if what it is is a behind-close-doors dock, and they put it in, and they lower the mortgage by 30% because they can, that's bad. That's bad for everybody that invested in this town. And we're, if we know it's bad, let's fight it. Let's figure out how to compete. If they wanna compete, let's do it now. Put it to bed. If they need, if it's a good thing, then let's get behind them and make the infrastructure work. But we shouldn't leave it to chance. We should, as a community, decide whether that's good or bad for us, and take some sort of proactive action on it. Some of this reminds, I think this is a time that has as, as momentous for this town as the fish traps were back in the 20s, 30s, and 40s. The fish traps, all of the ownership was out of town, out of San Francisco and Seattle. They had the feds wrapped around their fingers. They dictated the fisheries in Alaska, and we were subservient to that. We came together as a community, we pushed for statehood, we outlawed the fish traps. And in the same time, we turned around and said, all of the fisheries, you had to put the captains on the boats. It couldn't become an industry. They made a fishery for all the individual people. We came together and fought something really hard. Could be that we need to come together and decide what we're doing and take some action on it or something. So, those are my points. I think we have to be careful that we don't create something that we don't wanna pass on to our kids. I think we have to do the tough thing and decide whether Ward Cove is for us, or it's good for us or bad. If it's bad for the city, I think we should call it for what it is and fight the damn thing. I think we should also get together and try to get these fighting factions together so that we can move ahead like they did when they took the fish traps on. We did it as a community. And the folks from Survey Point, they're our friends right now. Let's hear them, let's listen to it, figure out what they have to say. But I think...
We have two folks left. Dave Wheeler is the next person.
Thank you all. Um, my girlfriend lives across from Carlin Air, and if there was a big old cruise ship right there, she wouldn't get to see the ocean. It's, uh, hard getting around. I tried driving around town, uh, yesterday. And there was a bunch of people that just wouldn't let me, you know, turn up to, get to, you know, up above the tunnel there. They've just taken pictures of each other, just, you know, screw you. Um, I kinda wonder about how much we wanna go, how far we wanna go with the tourism. That's all.
Thank you. Last person on the list is Katrina Jones.
Good evening. Thank you for holding this. Um, I guess I wanna ask you all, um, where you wanna live. Um, I, I work for a local cannery in town, and, uh, there, in the last three weeks, um, I had employees that worked for about three hours. Um, this is the slowest I've ever seen fishing, ever. Um, you know, there, there are a lot of environmental factors that are happening in the ocean. There are a lot of things that we can't control. Um, but it feels like Pike's Place Market when you walk downtown. And pretty soon, we're gonna have to ship fish from the north down here to put in our stores. Um... Anyway, um, I guess there are people who want to come here. People, this is a travel destination. People want to see this place. But they come here to see the wilderness. They come here to see something different than down south. They spend all this money to come here to see a beautiful part of the world, to see wildlife. We talked about putting cruise ships on Ravina Island, um, to see the wildlife. The wildlife tends to run from people. You put too many people in a place, and, you know, the fish are gonna start heading out. The, like, they did in California, like, they did in Oregon, like, they did in Washington, um, like they're doing in Southeast. Um, the, the wildlife's gonna leave. We're gonna be left with not a whole lot to offer. We won't have fisheries, we won't have, you know, we won't have the pulp mill. We won't have anything to show tourists besides some stores that look like any other cruise circuit you could go on in any part of the world. The same useless, you see the same stores with the same employees from out of town that come up here. Um, I guess, I, if, if you wanna live in Alaska, if you wanna live in Ketchikan, um, if you wanna live in Southeast Alaska, let's try to keep it what it's like, why people come here. Thanks.
And Kathy, the last person, um, who will close public comment.
Uh, may I ask if I could take Betsy Burdette's place?
May I ask if I could take Betsy for desk, please? I couldn't get here soon enough to sign up.
Oh, we have two. Okay, sure. And then, who's first?
Oh, he was on the list.
Hey, I'm Paul Jarvie. I own a couple of local businesses that deal with the tourism. And I've learned a lot of things tonight. I hope that there's enough votes to start this RFP process. I also think that listening to Survey Point and bringing them into the table is a very good idea. I am open year-round with one of my Julie's stores, and I hope to continue being open into the future. FYI, Julie's is going to write less of a sales tax check for the second quarter because of the construction and Caribbean hockers, but that's not tonight's business. We learned a lot tonight, and I hope you, as a group, make some great decisions and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my 16th year as a fishing guide. I work for the redheaded guy back there, Chuck Sligo. And as I was standing on the dock to pick up my passengers the other day, watching the, well, first I'm thinking about all the toilets and the running out of water. The day we had 13,200 or 400 people in town that day, I started thinking about how many toilets are being flushed in town when we're in a drought. And I'm standing watching the Disney ship guy goes off that big ship, and it didn't look that dirty to me. And they have bosun's chairs, I can send guys down to wash the windows. So I'm wondering how much is that costing us just in diesel costs with having all this water being used when we're in a drought 60 inches behind our rainfall? I don't think those numbers have been looked at or even thought about and crunched before we allow them to suck up the rest of our water so that we can continue paying diesel for the year-round. The other thing is, yeah, I totally agree with Chuck's point about Ward Cove. Huna has given in to the tourist industry, and they're going to own that town. Petersburg, when the cruise industry wanted to go in there, they said, "No, we don't want you to go away." Consequently, Petersburg and Wrangell look like old Alaskan towns. I've caretaken my mom for the last four years. She just went in the Pioneer's home. But as all, in the wintertime, we'd drive through town, she would tell me where all the stores used to be, and she, it would, she was depressed. She grew up here when there were five ladies' stores, men's dress shops, butcher shops. It was a real town. And when I grew up here, you could go to restaurants on Front Street and Gaffney's and buy clothes down there. And the only place you can get clothes downtown now that are worth anything is a Tonga store upstairs and across the street, or out at Smallmark. So I order most of my clothes from out of town. And it's just, it's sad that we, the jewelry guys are always trying to get me to send my passengers in there, but, you know, the ones that go on Chuck's tour don't, aren't interested in jewelry. But they did a study a few years back that the ferry tourists spend more money in town than the cruise ship tourists. So it's not all about just bringing more ships, more ships, bigger docks, bigger docks. We already, our view is blocked all summer long, and I am Dave's girlfriend's neighbor. And if I was not working for Chuck, my view would be blocked all summer. Not to mention my solar energy, once I get my solar panels hanging off my deck. So there's all these factors involved. And sure, it's brought money to town, but look at how we're suffering. I have tourists walking up in my neighborhood now, and we've lost parking places downtown on Stedman Street. And yet the city, when DOT was fixing the road for three years that we had to deal with, they took Tom Burrows's house out, and there was a chunk of rock under it, and the city refused to chip that, the state offered to chip that rock out and make a bigger parking place, and they were going to pay for it, and the city said no. And what is that all about? We bend over for the tourists all the time at the expense of the local people. And that's not right. Because we, we live here year-round. I'm not leaving. I love this state. I came home. I have a love-hate relationship with Ketchikan, but I love it here. I love the wilderness. And the people I take out, they can't believe all this wilderness nobody's built on. Because down where they live, it's all trash everywhere, and they can't believe how clean that beach is that we take Chuck's people to. There's no trash out there. And they're, they're like, "Oh, can we pick up the shells?" We're like, "Yeah, there'd be more tomorrow when the waves come in." And, "Can we take rocks?" "Yeah, the beach is making rocks all the time." So, we live in an amazing place, and I don't want to see a good ruin. And I worry about even the people that run year-round businesses here that have to drive back and forth through town, how many minutes that slows down, that's cutting into their time for making money, for businesses that work here year-round. The, you know, the electricians, the plumbers, the contractors, when they got to go through that and they're burning up two hours trying to go get supplies because of all these buses and all this other stuff. So I would just encourage you guys to crunch the numbers, do the math, before we make any, like, jumping-off-a-cliff decisions. So that's it.
I was Harvey also, I didn't get your time this night. I would just like to, but there's a lot of... John Stewart. And I live in town, also have a place in the borough. But what Clay was up here talking about is that this is, this is something I'd like to, to see us move in that direction. If we partner with our locals that we're already partnered with, rather than, you know, anyone from outside, it would, and expanding on berth one and two, that would help alleviate, not to say that we wouldn't think about anything else in the future, but that would give us a little bit of wiggle room, I would think. We could work on that, and then we could come together with a commission, perhaps, as was suggested, to get more information on the table for a more in-depth discussion. But we have, you know, local companies here that are capable, I'm quite sure, of doing the work that would be needed in order to do that. It could be done timely. And in the meantime, we can be having a discussion about anything further on that. As far as getting these larger ships in, because I'm, I don't think that to say that you can't put a cap on it, well, you can put a cap on it, but I don't think the information is on the table with, you know, with everyone in the community to say if that's really what they want to do. I think, you know, there's, there's more information to be had and shared in, in order to make an informed decision. I would just hope that we manage this by design rather than managing by crisis. And managing by crisis never works out well in the long term. As far as what's going on, traffic, the road construction and all of that stuff, well, you know, that's, you know, going to be problematic as it's going on, no matter what. We're nearly through it, we'll be, it'll be a happy day when it's, when it's done. But what I have noticed with it is, we've got wider sidewalks, all of that, that's great. I see nothing going on that's going to alleviate traffic. And a couple of ideas I'd shared with Lacey some time ago was to take dock traffic and put it on the dock at Sockeye Sam's and do one-way all the way down to the new fire hall at Button, and take that traffic, because as I drive through town, I come along at Sockeye Sam's and somebody leaps out there waving their arms, stopping traffic to bring a bus out into traffic there. Or a tra, you know, they're slowing down to get a turnout on there. I run into the same thing at Dock Street, and so on and so forth. It's chaos. And so if we could do that, and that would, that would take a lot of, it would smooth out the flow of traffic through the downtown. Ryers float has been rendered useless. It's, it's, it's no point in it being there anymore. It's not used. I don't know of anybody that's been using it. People, locals have been run out of there by layering crafts, on and so forth. There's no point in it being there. I don't know what needs to be done to work with the heirs of the Ryers family or anything else. But if that were gone and the dock was straightened out, you would, you'd have a much better traffic flow from Sockeye Sam's all the way down to the fire hall. Someone else here mentioned the Third Avenue bypass. If that's opened up to tour buses, not limited to 15-passenger buses, but opened up to tour bus traffic, I think it would help alleviate a lot. You get traffic up there, and if you're going south, great, you go south. If you're going north, go up Dearmont, that's a white street now, it would take them up past the park. Schools are not in session in summer. Put them on the bypass, get them, get them north, get them where they need to go. And a few, few things like that. But all of that could happen with a discussion, with a commission, perhaps, to specifically look at this and bring that information in. But as far as the dock expansion goes, I think we should be working with our, you know, partnering with our locals and using our local and regional engineers and contractors because we're smart enough to do that.
Thank you. And we have one more.
Abby Bradbury, 955 Forest Avenue. I just want to say a couple of quick things. I agree with a lot of things said today. The major thing is, if we don't expand our docks, somebody else obviously is, and then we lose that control. Everybody talks about, "We want to control the industry here in Ketchikan." Well, unfortunately, if we don't provide the dock, somebody else is going to provide the dock and then control it. So first step is we need to gain control, expand the dock so that we can have those ships. They're going to pick to dock in town versus out at Ward Cove if they had the option. I don't know any guest that would be happy having to take a 30-minute shuttle or boat ride just to come to see Ketchikan that they love, Creek Street, downtown, the sign, the statue, everything. So let's get ahead of the game and get that done. Second thing is, we've been having these conversations for three-plus years. It's time for our elected officials to come together, take the information you've gotten from these meetings. I've been to numerous meetings over this exact same topic over the past three years. Take the information, get together, and make a decision. That's why we chose you guys to sit at that table for us. You will, we all know that you'll take the best interest for Ketchikan and make it great. Next, if we don't work with the cruise industry and expand the dock, they will leave, they will start taking the ships other places. I've been in numerous conversations where they've mentioned, "Oh, well, we could just buy an island, and we could just create our own little island and don't have to go into another port. We can control it and take care of it. That would alleviate us." We already have ships coming to Alaska that bypass us because we don't have the dock space. And they would love to come here, so we really need to think about that. If we lose the cruise industry here, unfortunately, Ketchikan, as you all love it, will be gone. There will be no economy here, like somebody said, fishing. It's there, but I have fishermen that live in the house with me, and I know they're not out fishing because there's nothing to catch. So we don't have that industry to really rely on keeping the borough and the city functioning. So just please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Okay, public comment is now closed. Counsel, do we have a motion, I think?
Are we doing a motion or are we just giving directions?
I've got the motion here.
You've got a motion?
Okay, the motion is on the table. I'm going to see Council, Rec Staff to develop a request for proposal, RFP, for soliciting the cruise industry interest in partnering with the city of Ketchikan to move the port, Ketchikan waterside up and infrastructure improvements forward as determined appropriate by the city council and said RFP to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Say a second?
I'll second.
Dick?
Yeah, you know, a lot of folks have spoken a lot of good things for us tonight. But we have been, like somebody said, we've been working on this for well over two years. And unfortunately, I don't like government working at that speed. We get nowhere, except more meetings and more talk. I think that the idea of working with these cruise lines and let them pay the bill, which I think is what will happen if we've been not misled. But we can send this out based upon what we want, both on the docks and any uplands. And if we don't like it, we can turn it down. It's not, it's not a done deal. And anybody that wants to propose something like the Survey Point proposal, it's, it's an option for Dock One, but it needs to be fit in with any other proposal that comes in. But I guess from what I can understand from a number of people, we probably need a floating dock down there, and that's exactly what they proposed. But the issue is the location and perhaps the cost. But if somebody's willing to pay for it, and it don't cost me as a taxpayer or you as a taxpayer dime, it seems to me like it's a deal. The other thing that I do need to ask one question of our consultant, because I know there's a lot of people concerned about, okay, we partnered with somebody, we lost control. And I'm not in the mood to lose control. So I need to ask Louis, what does it mean if we partner with somebody and they get, what, preferential birthing rights or something like that? And, and can we do it and still have control? Even though they may have an option for having it there two weeks, that still five days a week is open, so...
I, I think all the points were well-taken, and I think that's the point of the RFP, that you're going to define what level of control you want. And that's the, that will be the terms in which people will have to submit a proposal with the appropriate level of control that you choose to have, whether it's to have public access, whether it's to provide local participation, whether, whatever those elements are, we build them into the RFP so that when you receive them, they either agree or disagree, but you'll know it, and then you'll see what are the offerings that you have out there. So I, I think that the, this is not like giving somebody the port and you do whatever you want with it, absolutely not. This is going to be working on the regime that we set forth with the RFP process itself, and that you, as a policymaker, will decide with the community, what is that?
Okay, if I may, Your Honor, just since I got a hold of the floor. You know, if we, if we look at what we're doing right now in town, what is it, 1.2 million a year, I think's the number that I've been hearing? That averages out to, I think, about 8,000 a day. That's an average on 150 days. The biggest day is right at 14,000 people. And that's if you dock one ship, on a dock twice, well, a second ship comes in on dock three. If you look at what somebody's been talking about, well, put it this way, if we got four docks, and it'll take four big ships at about 4,000 apiece, that's 16,000 a day unless you dock the second one. The difference is only between 1.2, and that right there is 1.4 a year. It doesn't seem like it's unreasonable. And I'm saying unreasonable because I don't want, I don't want this unlimited growth either. I think we can pick a figure, and the docks that we put in there can manage it, and we, and we've got the opportunity to do it. So, you know, with, with that said, if we can move forward, I guess one last comment. I don't like the timeframe that we've been presented with. Going out for seeing, are there anybody interested for 60 days is too long in my mind. So I guess we'll work that out as we get to it. But anyway, that's my comments, thank you.
Anyone else?
Judy?
Yes?
You know, I've been as supportive of moving ahead on looking at this RFP to see what people would come, or the industry would be interested in to be involved, how much. You know, we said to farmers, "Nobody in this place, the council wants to give up any control." We do have an operator, though, and... Uh, we do have an operator though, and, um, and, um, Survey Point Holdings. And they do have an idea that, um, I still think we should, uh, move ahead with too. I've given the plans to the management, uh, before, once or twice, and I think we should ask management to review that, and I don't know if that's reviewing with their own, um, engineer of their choice or talk to Chuck. But it is an option. I know, you know, I mean, Survey Point, they'd love us to do it, you know, do it through that plan they have because they don't want anybody to get any preferential birthing because, you know, their outfits already get preferential birthing. So I understand that competition. But it is a, a cheaper aspect. The prices of the, um, stuff that we're dealing with above us, um, scare the heck out of me. And if we can work out a way we could do it, um, cheaper, and even if we could do it, um, by raising the head tax and utilizing, you know, the eleven million we have in the account already and being able to produce something, do one and then they take care of three, um, I think we're in the right direction and we can do it, um, uh, more efficiently and financially for the city's sake. Um, you know, getting that kind of debt for the city, to me, I know the industry would be paying for it, we could have some contribution from the, um, industry, but, uh, I really want to look at, um, have that plan reviewed officially and instead of just looked at and said, oh, wow, that's an idea. Um, I'd like to hear the pros and cons on that and the actual costs on it. And, um, so I think both things should be moving ahead, uh, at the same time so we can get an idea, because we might even just want to, um, you know, just start with our three if we don't, are we concerned about that? I mean, a hundred million bucks. Um, I know it's the head tax and it's not coming out of the pockets of the people here in town, but, um, I still think there might be another option. And I want to make sure that we, um, look at it. I mean, I'm not worried about speed or whatever. I mean, I want this to get done as fast, but I wanted us to do it the right way and the best way for the community. And I think, um, looking at that, I, um, you know, I think we should just focus on one, two, and three. Uh, berth four is owned by, um, Ketchikan Dock Company. If they want to build a bigger dock, great, uh, that's up to them or we can negotiate sometime when we get together on that. Right now, we definitely aren't. Um, the stuff out of Ward Cove, you know, that's up, that's free enterprise, just like Survey Point and berth four, that was free enterprise. We got into that, we didn't ask them to build it. They were going to build it and do it privately. We were told by the merchants down, sat down in downtown said, we don't want a private dock in competition, we're going to lose money. That's why we got the lease, because the people downtown said they don't want it and didn't want any private competition. And the same thing now is going out of Ward Cove and I'm not going to, um, I think that's fine, we're eventually going to need some other docks. And if they can make it work, all the power to them, if, um, the borough, that's going to be the borough and the survey, and, um, Ward Cove group's, uh, project, not ours. And so we just need to focus on one, two, three. Ketchikan, the city Ketchikan also, and that's always should be focused on. That's it.
Uh, your honor, so can, can you, um, clarify with this RFP, um, since we just, we haven't had a chance to look at it, but are we, um, are we making stipulations in this before we put it out for RFP or are we voting to just have it put out for RFP without our approval of what goes into that RFP? So I guess that would be my clarif- I just need clarification on that. I mean, if we're putting out an RFP, what are we putting in besides what we have here?
I think we're voting to move forward with the RFP, that's what the motion says, but you're asking...
Well, we have another meeting to go over.
Right, okay.
We will deci- we will decide, we'll decide what goes in the RFP. We have not decided that.
Right.
All we're doing right now is saying, let's start the process. And then over the next several weeks, then what we decide is the RFP.
I just think that needs to be clarified for the room.
Any other comments? Yes?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and gave, gave comments tonight. Um, now, I listened very carefully to what you all had to say. Um, it's, it split about evenly, about pro-development and about maybe status quo or even stepping back a little bit. I think that, uh, sitting on the council, we have such a, uh, a, a very complex question of how we're going to approach this. I think most of us here on the council are thinking that we're going to, uh, do some development, we're going to do some uplands development, and we need to do that in a thoughtful way. We need to have, um, some of the comments were controlled development and to, to get, uh, to, to, to get the most out of this process as we can and preserve our quality of life here in Ketchikan. I think that, um, I think that a lot of comments were about keeping, uh, that development local. And I think as we structure this RFP, I think we should do it in a way that reflects and, and gives us the ability for our local folks to fairly compete or be involved in that process. Um, I have been shown some other ideas other than what Louis showed us tonight that definitely have merit. Uh, I think Clay talked about that a little bit tonight, and I think that's something that we need to look at that carefully. And what we also need to do is we need to have more meetings, we need to have work sessions with, uh, with the local people that, that do this. I mean, if anybody knows anything about the industry, it's the folks that have been doing it for twenty years that live right here. I think that, um, I have a lot of trepidation about, um, you know, like engaging with the multi-billion dollar corporation about how we're going to run our port or how we might structure that. Um, Seattle, Miami, Puerto Rico have done that. We're not Seattle, Miami, or Puerto Rico, we're Ketchikan, Alaska. We're a very small entity versus all of these other people. And that, that gives me a lot of pause right there. So, um, this is a complex issue that I think that we need to spend a lot more time on. I was talking a little bit with Louis during the break that there's no way that we as laypeople and sitting on the city council can sit here for one night and decide which direction that we're going to go. And it's pro-development, I'm for pro-development, I'm for controlled development, I'm for keeping ourselves local. Um, I, I have, you know, the public-private partnership, I think the concept has merits so they can bring in all of this money and build plans development, but what are we giving up for that? A lot of people have talked to me about, uh, you know, selling our souls, you know, that's, that's, that's something that I hear quite a lot of. And I'm also hearing quite a lot of, let's keep it local. I mean, let's do this incrementally. And so I don't think anybody at this table is talking about putting in eighty berth ships and, and all of that. I think what we do need to remain competitive in a competitive market and time is not on our side. So, uh, we're going to be making some decisions and hopefully we can, uh, come up with the best path forward. Some people are going to be unhappy and some are going to be, I, hopefully, most of you understand or ration out. That's all I have.
So, we've had two meetings now, um, and frankly, I feel that for a lot of this, we haven't been listening. I mean, the, the one thing that everyone has basically told us is, um, we need to take our time and we're not using our local people. I think that Chuck is right, we have expertise in the room that we haven't engaged. And I think that's important because although these are, it's a pretty presentation and there's, you know, lots of money being dangled in front of us, there's going to be a cost. I mean, nobody's going to give us a hundred and some million dollars without there being a cost. And I'm just not comfortable with that yet. I, yes, we have to move forward. I, I also had an opportunity to review, uh, another proposal for, um, berth one, and I do think we should investigate that. Survey Point Holdings, Ketchikan Dock Company is invested in this community. They've been here a long time, they employ our neighbors, our friends. At the very least, we, they should be given an opportunity to look at this. They know what they're doing and they should, at the very least, have a seat at the table and be able to, um, help us through this process. So, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Um, so in two thousand and five, the last time DNA was up here, they did a report and there was something that jumped out at me, and it was this statement, the holistic development of the town, not just the cruise business. So, I would say after listening to very divergent opinions, we missed that. It hasn't been inclusive, it hasn't been holistic, it has benefited some very sharp people who are smart enough to get into the tourism business, and my hats are off, my hats off to them, congratulations. There's a large segment of the town that I don't think has had adequate representation for the last twenty years as our sidewalks, electrical, infrastructure, have all of these things have had an impact. Is it just from the cruise ship passengers? Nope, we take a toll on our own stuff. However, I think if you look at twenty-five years of tourism, it's pretty apparent at this time that the sales tax generated by the tourism industry has not been sustaining to the town. It has helped keep property taxes down, and what the city's done for the better part of the last two decades is run in place on infrastructure. There was some discussion tonight about infrastructure as it relates to the uplands, and since I've been sitting on the council, every time the cruise ship top, topic comes up, I bring up infrastructure, but not just in the vein of infrastructure that supports the port. We need infrastructure that supports the town. We need infrastructure that supports the local people that we represent as council people with equal weight and measure as we should to the store owners and the, and the tour operators so that they have the opportunity for a good new sidewalk in front of their house, so that maybe they have the opportunity for some, uh, parks and trails in the community where they can go and tourists can't. Um, I've been here for thirty-five years, so I've been here long enough to see some pretty significant changes. I think that the cat's out of the bag when people talk about we don't want our lifestyle altered. I think it already is and has been for quite some time. I think measured, intelligent growth is the way to go because we are a cruise ship town, whether we like it or not, that's our predominant industry and we should avail ourselves of that opportunity. And if we don't get it right this time round, and I don't think we did the last twenty years by and large, we're going to have a town that's even more beat up and less attractive and less likely that our children will want to stay. So, I hope as we work through this, we take a measured approach, we look at doing the types of development that support the business community, and finally take a harder, deeper look at doing some things that will help the locals that, uh, don't have a paycheck attached to tourism. Thank you.
Your honor? If anyone else has talked, I need you to.
We heard a lot of things tonight, we heard a lot of things the last time you guys spoke to us, and we are listening. Uh, the challenge is, and I want to reach out to all of you guys, is that if we take a decision that is not the direction that you want us to go, that doesn't mean we're not listening. You know, we heard an awful lot of divergent opinions tonight. We're going too slow, we're going too fast. We're, we're not doing enough to help grow the industry or at least maintain the industry, or we're not doing absolutely anything to help the locals. Um, anyone who's been to any of these meetings knows that's not quite true, but I'm going to reach out to all you guys. The only way that we're going to solve the situation is if we all can agree where the median, where, where the middle is. You know, if we, if we, if, if we hold to our opinions that, you know, it's got to be this or it's got to be that, we're going to be sitting here in twenty years saying, wow, that didn't work out so well. And to be honest, over the last twenty years, I'm not sure it has worked out all that well. You know, I remember, I remember the discussions a decade ago when, well, we're, we're, we're doing things for the next fifty years and well, it turned out to be thirteen or fourteen or fifteen or whatever, and now we're back here again. And the decisions we make are going to have a major effect on this community. There's no question about that. But we're going to need you guys who all care about this very deeply enough to take up, you know, three hours or four hours of your, to help us make those decisions and to help find where indeed the middle is. Because if we go either, either one direction or the other, we're going to regret it. And I think our biggest fear up here, at least mine certainly, is I don't want to be sitting here twenty years from now and someone saying, well, you really screwed up twenty years ago. I don't want to be there. But we're all going to need your help to get there, and we're going to need seriously a sense of where the middle is and what you guys can agree on. Because without that, this isn't going to work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
There's more questions pending. Why don't you get a ratio of hands as to what we want?
That's, that's not a, that's not on our agenda. Um, I would like to, um, I don't, to amend the motion that's on the table, um, to direct the staff to review the option that was presented by Ketchikan Dock Company.
Survey Point Holdings.
Oh, sorry, Survey.
It's all right.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, so can we call the roll-in motion?
Okay. Clarify the motion. Clarify the amendment. Does that mean that, uh, the RFP is stopped?
To go with the RFP?
Or they just do both of them?
Do both?
Okay.
Judy? I don't understand. Could, could, could it be as part of the RFP? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Before the RFP?
Well, I think they can, they can, they, it's going to take, what, ninety days to do this RFP? I'd like the staff, um, to review the proposal that Survey Point Holdings brought to the table.
I'd like to not only do that, but have a work session. Not just have, do not, not, not just have staff review it, oh, sorry. So the amendment I would offer is that we not only have staff review it, but we have a work session with Survey Point Holdings and any other concerned, um, industry people. I think, uh, I think a lot of the comments that we heard, well, that's my motion, so is there a second?
Well, we just need to vote on the first amendment, then we can amend that. But you can't add an amendment.
Okay.
Can I, excuse me? Your honor, may, may I make a clarifying statement before the roll call is called on the amendment? So if I'm understanding this correctly, the council would like to simultaneously go through a competitive RFP process and give preferential consideration to the proposal that's been brought forth by Survey Point Holdings.
No.
Uh, no. Uh, some of us haven't even seen this, so would it not be purty to have everybody get a copy first? Or, I'm just curious what we're... Sorry.
Judy?
Yes, your honor?
Um, I, I just for clarification, my own mind, um, I have no problem reviewing plans, uh, and we're going to see a number of plans. We also see the one from Moffett Nicholson in regards to what we're doing moving forward. But I think that when we started down this path and moving forward, one of the concerns was the input from cruise ships prior to an RFP. And I, and I think I need to remind everybody that in regards to berth four, um, and, and Survey Point Holdings, they also are in partnership with the cruise industry. And if we allow one segment to have, uh, input prior to an RFP, are we going to open it up for other cruise lines to have the same, uh, opportunity?
I agree. I think that, I mean, I, I don't know what the legal point is on that, but we're already in business with Survey Point. I don't know what, if, does that mean we look at them first and then we go out for the RFP? Because I'm not good with that too. I mean, in order to do this, are you saying that we can't do both of them at the same time? Or are you saying we can't do it at all?
Well, I think rather than put it into a motion, what we're doing tonight is we're deciding to build the house, and now we're going to start after that fact, figure out what that house looks like, what it's, what it's going to be. And so we're going to take all of these, um, I guess, proposals, options and things and take them into mind. Uh, and, and if we're going to be looking at, uh, a public-private partnership, uh, one of the conversations we had is not to get too involved in the specific design because whoever we decide to partnership with will probably want to have some input to that. So I think that, that, that a design will be forthcoming with any of the proposals that we work with.
Your honor?
Counsel McBrisham?
Thanks, and then you can have a shot at this, Lou. And then you can have a shot at this, Louis. Bob, this process is very public. I mean, whoever goes out for the RFP already knows what our budget, what our preliminary plans are and everything else. Any discussions that we have with anybody would be in a public forum and a public, a part of the public process. And so, you know, I, we're sitting here tonight listening to the public comment and, you know, the, some of the public comment was to work with our local folks first. And I think that's a good first step. And I think that's a step that we often overlook. When I, when I ran for office, and I, I said this a lot, that we have a real inferiority complex about our own ability to do our own things with, with what we do right here. So I, I think it would be a good thing for us to have a work session, hear what these guys have to say. It's all public. You can go right into the rest of the information packet that's already existing. And so I'm gonna be supporting this motion and hope it goes through. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, I like Sam's idea. I don't have, having a work session might be good and also have the management view. The difference between the RFP and Survey Point is they're saying, they're not wanting to get into business with this, with us. They're just saying, hey, here's a way you could do berth one cheaper so you wouldn't have to go through all this stuff with RFP. So it's just a different option, which I think we should take a look at, through a work session with management talking to them and whoever they've been working with, imagine Chuck. So it's a little different. The RFP, we're gonna be asking people to team with us and, or provide money so we can, you know, do some preferential birthing or something. I mean, we're not gonna do much more than that. But this is just an option of doing, how the city could pay for it and do it cheaper. And so it's a little different than, we can't make it part of the RFP because it's, it would be a different, it's just an idea, so. But I think we should investigate the idea fully before we move on with the RFP. We can continue the process and I'll support the motion. But I think we should deal with the Survey Point ideas separately because it won't be presented as a RFP option.
Right. Councilmember Kuss?
Yeah, I, as I understand in the proposal by Survey Point is that we don't do the rock. And I'm not willing to not take out the rock. So I don't know where the, I don't know where they're gonna get that $8 million from. Otherwise, it was coming out of, I think, maybe our cruise line fees. So I don't, I don't have a problem in talking about it, but right now I got a problem with the way it's proposed to be financed. And they're not trying to get into business with us, they're just offering us a good proposal. And the question is whether or not we think it'll work. And, and I, you know, I just, I don't know. But like I say, my problem with it's the rock going away. If there's an alternative to keeping the rock and, and being able to look, then it's worth looking at. So I, I don't mind looking at this at, say, the next meeting, if the staff wants to look at it and bring it back to us. But I think the RFP needs to move forward. Because otherwise, we're just continuing to delay it. Like I say, we've done it for two years, we'll be here two years from now doing the same thing if we're not careful.
Anybody else?
So... So, sorry, ma'am, could you reread the amendments?
Well, Councilmember Bergeron will have to, if he still wants to make his amendment, he'll have to wait till the first amendment.
Okay, so what, so what's the first amendment we're going to?
The first amendment was made by Vice Mayor Zingy to have staff review the option of their proposal during the, and still do the RFP, but send, have staff review the Survey Point's proposal.
And bring it back to the council.
And bring it back to the council. So we're just adding to the motion to not only do the RFP, but to bring the Survey Point Holdings proposal, have staff review it and bring it back to council.
And the amendment, the amendment, which we're not considering at this point, was simply to have a work session, was that what you?
Yeah. And so if Mayor, Vice Mayor Zingy wants to add that to her amendment, she could. Or we can vote on one and then have Councilmember Bergeron do his amendment.
I can add that to my amendment.
And is that okay with this second amendment? Would she add a vote session on this work session? Okay?
Okay.
So the first vote will be for the amendment, and then we'll vote on the main motion. Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kuss?
Okay. At least a time and a work session.
Now we'll vote on the main motion as amendment.
Thank you.
Kuss?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
We have passes, so, thank you.
So basically, we're gonna have a work session.
Now we have our one final motion. I don't have an agenda. Oh, Mayor, Councilwoman.
Start with Don Mar.
Nothing else?
Councilmember Kuyfer?
No, I thank you all for coming out. And there will be more meetings and more chance for discussions. No comments.
I'm sorry. Dick, comments?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for your comments. Bear with us for the government at work.
Tenley?
Yeah, thank you for coming out, everybody. And I wanna reiterate the same thing that Kuyfer said, that we have to find our middle. I too, I feel for you. I grew up here, born and raised, so I understand both sides of that fence. But somewhere, there's gotta be a middle where we can all work together. Hope you have a good night.
If anyone wants to sign my petition, I'm...
No comments.
No comment? Thank you for all your patience and I'm sure we'll be talking soon.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I feel good.